Looks like it's 9:00 AM. We're ready to, oh, let's see what we got here. Okay. So we got the document here. All right. So we'll open up the meeting for the Board of Supervisors, August 9th, 2022. And as customary, we will start with a moment of silence. And I have one for a longtime resident of Clear Lake Oaks, Diana Kozar. She's joining her husband, who has passed five years back, Frank Kozar. She worked for the Robinson Tribe as the CFO for at least 25 years. And so we wanted to give this moment of silence to her and her family. Jessica, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Is there any that? Okay, I thought you had something. With that, we'll move on to item five, approval of consent agenda. These items are customarily non-controversial, and we will usually pass them all with one motion. However, if you would like to pull any of the consent agenda items, we will do so at this time and address it at a later time. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pull items for further discussion, items 5.8 and 5.14.
Okay. Any other board members? Anyone from the public? And if you do, please come up to the microphone and state the number and...
Joan Moss, I want to pull 5.1.
5.1. So it looks like we'll pull 5.1, 5.8, and 5.14. Bring it back to the board. Is there anyone else that would like to? Not seeing, okay. And I don't see anybody on Zoom. Well, wait, I see a chat. No, we're good. So we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve item 5.2 through 5.7, 5.9 through 5.13, and 5.15 through 5.20? Yeah, 5.20.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. We'll address those a little later. With that, we'll go into our next, let's see where we're at, 9:03. Well, it looks like we might have to. Yeah, we do. So we'll pull up, we'll do 5.1. We'll start with 5.1. Joan, would you like to come up and talk about 5.1, why you would like to pull it? So if you can, okay.
Joan Moss, I wrote a number of complaints, and I did speak to Carolyn Rutan. The other day, I got this in my mailbox. I'm going to read it to you. It's concerning the killing of trees that don't need it on Cobb. Attention to the people that are local to the...
I don't know that this is 5.1 versus a public comment. 5.1 is about trees that are dying from pests and drought.
Yes, I am commenting on the vegetation management.
It's the same, yeah.
And I did fill out a citizen's input in case you wouldn't accept it for this.
Well, this is, this says continuation of the proclamation of the existence of the local emergency due to pervasive tree mortality.
I can read it now or I can read it at citizen's input, whichever you wish.
Okay, one second, Joan. Let me, Anita, do you think this covers that proclamation? Or should we allow her to go during public input?
Your board can go either way. If the speaker believes that this relates to the existence of continuing an emergency for pervasive tree mortality, then it's appropriate to be spoken of now. If it does not relate to that topic, then of course it would have to be at public input.
This does relate to it, but you can make your own judgment.
If you can continue, and we'll go forward from there. Go ahead, go ahead.
It has come to my attention that PG&E has financed a very aggressive policy regarding our communities. The company has removed possibly thousands of healthy trees in the guise of safety.
Yeah, this, we'll bring it to public input.
So this is, this will be later?
This will be your public input comment. We'll come to that.
Yes, it will.
Okay, so we'll have you come back up when we do public input.
Okay.
Okay, so we're...
I figure either way, I want to read this.
You will get your chance.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just for clarification, the emergency of tree mortality, those trees are already dead and potentially killing other trees if nothing is done. But you're talking about trees that are healthy, so that's why it's a separate issue.
Okay.
I disagree too, because if she, I think we should let her speak now. I have my, oh, sorry. We won't be able to comment if she reads her statement at public comment. I feel like it's, it's...
You would rather be able to comment, so just tie it to it.
I think it has to do with tree mortality. It's a little in the weeds, but I think it's...
All right, Joan, continue. Yes, yes.
Sorry, Joan.
Sorry about that.
Healthy trees. However, many trees that have been removed do not fit the criteria of dead or dying trees. It seems that PG&E is being extreme with no regard to the health of the forest, and they are destroying the ambiance of our neighborhoods. Indeed, the approach may make our fire situation worse because the trees provide moisture for the climate in their leaves, trunks, and limbs. The canopy provides shade. Without the tree's presence, the ground temperature rises and becomes drier and more flammable. This is what I have read. With large areas cleared, embers can be thrown farther. It would seem that there is nothing we can do or say to prevent the destruction of the nature that we would like to coexist with. But there is. Ask to see the permit, arborist of Forester License. The gentleman that said he was an arborist the next day admitted he was not an arborist that I spoke with, and I complained about that. I heard from Carolyn Rutan about this. I did complain to other people. If they cannot provide it, then I would make an issue for refusal. Trees are property. If the tree is on your property, then it is yours. If you don't want it cut, just put a note on the tree. Do not cut and sign your name. Make sure that the tree is healthy before you save it from being cut down. Get a second opinion. I got a second opinion for free. Lake County Tree Service will give you a free tree inspection, and you can confirm the health of the tree. The number is 707-279-9501. You would be held liable if the tree falls on the power line, so be sure to check. Ask the company to trim the tree instead of cutting it down. They will want to cut it down because it seems they get paid more money. Talk to your neighbors and share your concerns. Write and call PG&E with your concerns. Supervisor of Vegetation, Dan, 415-686-2271. If they have really damaged your hillside, post a no trespassing sign. Make sure to sign it and put your phone number on it, too. If you feel that you are being pressured by them, then you probably are. Don't believe everything they tell you. Right away for distribution lines, 30 feet, 15 feet on each side, transmission line, 50 feet, 25 feet on either side. California Public Resource Code 4292 says trees only need to be 10 feet radius away from a power line. I'm almost done. Please do your own research. This info is what I found online and would need to be updated. If you have questions, I may be able to help. Text 510-993-5349. I thought that you should know that this went to every resident on Cobb, and I invite you to drive down Wildcat Road. You will cry. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, who wrote that letter?
I don't know who wrote it. They gave...
There's not a name on it? It's just a phone number?
Yes, I did read it to you. You'll get, you get, and you can call them. Because I know, I know that I wrote you, Mrs. Pyska, and I never heard back.
I didn't receive it. If you've sent it, I wasn't here last week.
I used the email that's on your business card.
Okay, I haven't gotten an email from you.
I will send you another thing, another call.
I didn't, I'm a resident of Cobb, and I didn't get this letter.
Thank you.
And I am concerned that there's not a name on here. I feel like there's some misinformation in here, too.
He does have a phone number at the...
Joan, can we let her speak?
Okay, thank you. It's always difficult to go through a transition, especially with the trees. We love our trees, but the fact is, is that the area that you're talking about on Wildcat is extremely overgrown, and it is in an area, a hotbed area, where we're losing a lot of trees. There's a lot of tree mortality in that area. And it's one of the last stands of timber that hasn't burned. And this proactive work that PG&E is doing, in my opinion, and I have been out there, is important work and needs to continue. I do hear complaints from people that are concerned about the trees being taken down. But I encourage them to have them removed by PG&E and not risk endangering the neighborhood.
So any other comments from the public? I don't see any in the chambers, and I don't see any online, so I'll bring it back to the board for action. And I see actually Supervisor Sabatier has a comment.
Yeah, just a quick question for Supervisor Pyska. This is more related to their first strike or whatever it is that PG&E for when trees are close to their power lines, and they're worried that it's going to interfere and potentially spark and create a fire versus the tree mortality. Am I correct on that, or is it kind of a mix?
It's two different vegetation maintenance plans. One of them is specifically targeting the dead and dying trees. That used to be their SEMA program, and now they're calling it the drought program, the drought and tree mortality program. So that's when they're targeting the standing dead trees. But they're also doing enhanced vegetation around the infrastructure. And that area hasn't seen this level of infrastructure clearance in a long time, so it is jarring, but it's necessary work.
Thank you.
With that, I think we need action on this item, 5.1, to the continuation of the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to the pervasive tree mortality.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the continuation of proclamation of the existence of a local tree emergency due to pervasive tree mortality.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. So move on to our timed items, 9:05. It looks like Lake County Animal Care and Control, pet of the week. I'm not sure. I don't see anyone here, so we'll pull that. We'll conduct that at a different time and go on to public input, 9:06.
They'll be here in about 10 minutes.
Okay, we'll do it then, yeah. And so I know that Joan's issue was already brought forward during 5.1, so what I'll do is we have public input from Roberta Lyons. And so public input, if you state your name for the record, and we'll start the three minutes when you do that, so.
Roberta Lyons, I live in the Jago Bay area near Lower Lake. And I would like to bring to the attention of the Board of Supervisors a situation that exposes a problem with the county's hazardous vegetation ordinance and urge the county to improve its procedures regarding vegetation management around our communities and along our roads. Recently, a large area on Point Lakeview Road, at least 10 to 15 acres, maybe more, has been graded in the name of abatement of hazardous vegetation. The owners of the property were on their way to grading their entire 60 acres. And if I had not reported it to the county, after which Todd Elliott, the grading officer, halted the clearing. According to Elliott, the grading was a result of a miscommunication between the county and the property owners, Jordan Lane Properties LLC of Colusa. According to a PRA request I made, the only communication was the notice to abate that was posted on the property by the county because of a complaint. There's no record of who made the complaint or if there was any other communication between the county and Jordan Lane Properties. The county's grading ordinance requires a grading permit before more than 10,000 square feet of native vegetation can be graded for vineyards or other projects. The case on Point Lakeview Road is a glaring example of the failing of the county to make clear to property owners what is required of them when their property is posted. So far, little mitigation has been required and no citation given. So when the county, so when the property owner applies for any other permits, there won't be any red flags. The grading was created, has created a tremendous eyesore with piles of boulders, dead chaparral, and expanses of bare dirt. So I urge the county agencies responsible for our fire safety to look at the problems that a blanket notice of abate creates. We need to develop a more thoughtful approach to the necessary vegetation management around our communities and along our roads and not allow clearing of acres of native vegetation. Chaparral is really a valuable ecosystem, native only to California, parts of Mexico, maybe some in southern Oregon. And our native chaparral habitat is not simply hazardous vegetation. It's the primary natural habitat of this area. It should be acknowledged for its environmental value. So what I'm asking is that the county work on clarifying these abatement notices so people know exactly what is required, what is required, and are not able to use the notice to grade property that would otherwise require a permit. Thank you.
Thank you. So I see that there's a hand up in Zoom. Donna Mikowitz, if you can unmute and state your name for the record, and we'll start your three minutes.
Donna Makowitz from Clear Lake Oaks. I'd like to follow up on what Ms. Lyons just discussed. As representative of Red Bud Audubon Society, I'd like to point out that chaparral provides nesting and feeding habitat to numerous birds, including California thrasher, rentit, spotted tohi. And one chaparral-sensitive species is the rentit. Rentits mate for life, never leave their chaparral area, and when the vegetation is destroyed, so is the rentit. This summer, the UROCK tribe released California condors back into the wild, and one day, we in Lake County hope to see them. If chaparral, their preferred habitat, is here, it could happen. Also, chaparral sequesters carbon, provides flowering shrubs and fords for pollinators, and is home to many small mammals, both large and small. Once a property is graded, like the Lakeview Road property, it will be taken over by non-native grasses that dry out quickly and are highly flammable, more so than native ground cover like Sonoma sage that once covered the area. We are in favor of thoughtful vegetation management like shaded fuel breaks along roads and around communities and hardening of homes. Please work on improving the communication between property owners and the county to prevent wholesale grading of our scenic hillsides. And thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands for public input, so I will close that item. Okay, well, then I won't close it. Well, sir, do you have public comment that you would like to? Okay, if you can come to the microphone. And I'm not sure if you filled out a document, but if so, you can do that while you come to the microphone. State your name for the record, and we'll start your three minutes then.
I'm Richard Saunders. I live in Lower Lake. I don't know, I've never done this before, so I'm trying to get used to this. I'm having trouble with code enforcement and my neighbor. My neighbor's putting a modular home on his property, and he's wanting to go into the easement and take over the easement. I don't really know how to explain all this, but it's, I got all my paperwork. He's, every time he has an issue where he's got an obstacle to cross, he has no inspections whatsoever done on his, on his new home that he's putting on, his modular home. He, now he, he went in after the fact using code enforcement to, to help him and do whatever he's got to do, you know? And I don't really, it's a long draw, it's gone on for a year. I've been, they've been calling, he's been calling code enforcement on me. The guy's been, I mean, coming over to the house. Marcus, the guy up there, he comes to my house, and he gives me a red tag for this. I've been trying to get a building permit to put a modular onto our lower half of my mother-in-law's property. And he, I mean, they just step in my way every time for something, nothing, you know? They come out, they tell me to clean up my mess, and it's always when I'm going to the dump or cleaning up already. You know, it's spread out a little bit, and it's like, I got all the pictures for that. I have, you know, and it's like, what he's doing is changing the, Marcus is changing the easement over to this guy. And because the easement has a bond of its own. I might not be explaining this right altogether. I do apologize. They, it's just a bunch of harassment. The sheriff's department comes out and agrees. They, like last week, they turned around and told me I had, he had a court order signed by the judge saying they could rip down my fence. And then the sheriff's office always tries to get involved, and I say it's a civil matter, and they still continue, and they want to, I, you know, it's a long drawn-out process. If I could get a meeting with somebody to go over this and show proof of everything, because every, you know, it's just, it's just too much to explain right here. You know what I'm saying? It's just, I mean, it's just ongoing. Like, last night, I had, I, this is why I'm late, is I've been up till, was up till 2:00 this morning with the neighbors coming over. They don't even live there. And I live in a, in a, back in a, I don't know if you know the area of Acugleman? And it's, it's like, the street ends at my house, and there's no neighbors. The guy that's putting a modular home there, he don't live there, there's no power. And they're telling me that my, my, the neighbors are complaining about my mess. You know?
All right, well, commonly, we don't, we can't comment during this, so we're just hearing you. But we have heard you, and I think Mocha did you...
Yeah, so I'm your supervisor, and obviously, Mary, I think we're hearing this, so. Maybe what you can do, because we can't really comment and have a meeting on it right now, back and forth, you can get my card right over there in the office and give me a call, and we'll look to get a meeting set up with you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Sooner than later.
Yeah, yeah.
Grab the card. When I'm done today, I'll give you a call.
Okay, because like today, they, I mean, last, last time, last, about two weeks ago, they gave me a final abatement. And, and it's like, I complied, they complied, I complied, and I cleaned up, and then they turned around and gave me a final one, and said I didn't comply.
Sir, like you said, we can't really...
Okay, I just want...
Grab the card, give him a call.
And maybe you can go up to the third floor, Mary?
So is it okay for me to speak?
I don't think we can talk.
We're not going to comment. You guys can deal with it.
I'll get my card and call you.
Oak Simon, District 1, you can grab it right in the office right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So with that, we'll close public input. And it looks like we're, we can go on to our 6.3. And our 6.3 is election of vice chair of the Board of Supervisors to replace Supervisor Scott. And I'll give the floor to Susan.
Yes, we bring this item before your board to discuss and consider the election of a vice chair that was created with the resignation of District 4 Supervisor Tina Scott.
Okay, so I, go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
I think that based on the way that our traditional process is, that I would nominate if the nomination was approved by Supervisor Pyska to be the vice chair.
Ms. Grant, did you?
I just wanted to make sure that it's the chair who's actually conducting the election. That's the process here, that's why.
Oh.
Sorry to interrupt, but that's the...
I didn't understand that.
And you can certainly call for nominations from the members of the board.
All right, so I will go ahead and call for nominations for members of the board. And Supervisor Sabatier, I think you made one, so.
I'll second that. Jessica, are you? Yes.
So we'll have to open it up to the public briefly. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item on the agenda about the nomination and the election? Have a vice chair? I don't see any on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
I do have a question that is related. I guess it's not related to this. But I'm thinking planning commission-wise, do we continue with the planning commissioner that was appointed by the previous until there's a new appointed supervisor? I'm just kind of curious how that part works, but I don't know how to connect it to this, so I guess I'll ask you afterwards.
So your motion still stands as to...
No, nothing changes. It was just trying to figure out how everything functions with the change that we have.
All right, so with that, I know we have a motion in a second, and so call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we do public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. That was very quick.
Opposed? All right, motion.
Mine was an aye. I was asking a question.
Okay, so I have a 4-0. All right, motion carries. Welcome aboard, Vice Chair, Pyska.
Do you want your plaque?
Congratulations.
Pass the plaque.
So we got, next item on the agenda is 6.4. And that is the, yeah, consideration of update of 2022 committee assignments for members of the Board of Supervisors due to the resignation of Supervisor Tina Scott. And so Susan, if you'd like to start out.
Yes, we provided your board with a list of those committees, which she served on. I do know that she had requested from different board members to cover in her absence during her resignation. I didn't know if you wished to go line item by line item, or have you had any discussion? I know you haven't had discussions about this yet, but any consideration of which committees you wish to serve on?
And so I know that there's usually customarily an alternate. But again, if there is another supervisor that, I mean, this is how I feel, would like to fill in as the alternate in case someone can't make one, there's no representation, some of these committees do, you want to make sure you have someone there, too. So if that's the case, I'm, I think we would be willing to discuss that as well. But otherwise, I'm familiar with what and if I'm an alternate on some of the situations or committees for Supervisor Scott. So is there any other comment or? Supervisor Sabatier?
There's three of them that I'm very interested in moving from either alternate into the main position or requesting to be in the main position. And those are the continuum of care, hope rising, and first five. I am the alternate currently for first five and went to the last meeting as a voting member. But looking to see if that can be changed, if that is approved by the rest of the board.
That's...
Supervisor Pyska, or Vice Chair Pyska, sorry.
Yeah, so I am the alternate for the continuum of care, but I can't make it this month. It was, the meeting was changed due to the fire last week. So I would be okay being the alternate for that one if you want to take that one.
And then first five, you're already on there, Supervisor Sabatier? And then the other one was what?
Hope Rising.
Hope Rising, okay, and then? Okay, that's another page. There we go.
I'm the alternate for Hope Rising, but it does interfere with a lot of my meetings.
You know, that's the real challenge when we put this together is adding, we're all set in different areas, so it doesn't interfere with the other meetings. So I don't know what we're, if we're going to be able to accomplish what this agenda item's for, because missing that board member, yeah. I was hoping it'd be a little easier if it was went through and said, hey, you guys got meetings on, you know, because I don't know all the meeting dates and the times and when these things are happening. Do you, do you guys have it all down?
I just know the ones that I want.
Yes.
Supervisor Pyska?
And we don't know how long, so would these be temporary assignments? And then if we, when we get the fifth member back? And then if we when we get the fifth member back, is it going up? They're just going to revert back to that? Are we going to have this discussion again in a month or two or, you know?
I think that's but I'll let Ms. Grant, Ms. Grant, if you have some.
I was just going to say that Supervisor Simon's points are well taken. Without a calendar of meeting times, it's hard for your board to juggle these. You do have alternates selected for this very purpose. If you know that there are certain alternates now on meetings, such as Supervisor Pyska was talking about conflicts, that you could address that today and you might want to wait until you have a calendar. Also, you do have to consider Supervisor Pyska suggested whether this is temporary, because if an appointment is made, then you could, if your board wished to, have all of those assignments transferred that were previously those of former Supervisor Scott to the new representative for District Four.
So I think just hearing that, Ms. Grant, I think for me, like, the suggestions that were already made, I think I'm fine with those. And when the appointment takes place, I would like to see the calendar with everything and if we can address even at that point, whether it takes, you know, I'll just, just for example, let's say hypothetically, it's in December. Well, we know that in January, we do this all over again anyhow, so then, or, you know, if it takes longer than that, we'll address it then. But if it's sooner, we can, I think we can come together and determine from that point. Do you all feel the same on that? Or or would you like to see a calendar and then have this discussion again? Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, I guess we can try and figure it out today, but I know if we if we do this on the flights and if we already studied more, but you know, like the there's a bunch of boards, LAFCO, she's, you know, already members on that, Area Planning Council, Ban and Vehicle Embatement. I know she was an alternate on those, but, you know, we're already going to those ones.
Supervisor Sabatier?
If I may, I think that maybe finding a place where there is no name, such as the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, ensuring that there is a name there, and if there's already an alternate or already a name, and and there's no one asking to replace Supervisor Scott's name on there as the appointment, no longer Supervisor Scott, but Tina Scott's name on there, that I think it's just our job always to be at those meetings. And if we're the alternate and the primary doesn't make it, that we need to try our best to be at those meetings. And I believe that that's what we do.
I see.
So I I think that if there's a name, there's only one name and there's nobody there, such as the Juvenile Justice Council, that I think we have to do something about that. I'm not quite sure what to do for the Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council.
What I've been doing is I conducted the Zooms. I mean, if they want to request me to make, since I'm the chair as well, you know, I can, it's a Monday, theirs is a Monday, I usually don't have any other conflicting advisory board meetings or, you know, max, but that one would just be the fourth that I, you know, deal with for a while, but that's okay. So but I do remember Tina stating that she wanted to stay on that. I don't know, though, in the realm of supervisor representative, and I meant the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, she mentioned that one of the meetings we had, she wanted to stay on that. But I don't know how that works when it comes to is this, this is a supervisory position, so we would still need to fill it.
And I don't know how that's possible because they meet at noon.
Yeah.
So I just don't see that even.
But but we have had, right, we had a non-board member serve on PEG for on an assignment for many years. So I think precedent has been set. If a board member wants to, or if this board decides to appoint somebody to a committee that's already been settled in my mind, unless I could say, you know, unless I'm told differently, because we had a board member, right, a former board member, Ed Robey, serve on the PEG Committee for many years.
Ms. Grant, sorry.
Absent a requirement set either by your board or by statute that it has to be a board member, I I don't see an issue with your board designating as you did with the PEG station.
And so would we would we make that recommendation today and then research it and come back or with that with that specific position, of course?
Yeah, the Juvenile Justice Commission is established by state law, so as I sit here, I don't know what the membership requirements are, but that certainly could come back next week for your board's consideration. But absent a state requirement that said it has to be a member of your board, your board can designate whomever you like.
Okay. Vice Chair Pyska, do you have your pin up?
Yes, so I think we ask her if if her schedule will allow and do that research and see if that will work. The Ag Advisory Committee, the we put that together for, well, it was my suggestion that it be District Four and District Five, since those are the largest Ag areas. And we only meet once or twice a year, so I would be okay with that one just coasting until January or until we have that filled. We don't have to worry about that one. I'm trying to look at the calendar for Hope Rising, and I think we can make that change if Supervisor Sabatier has the time to do it, because I I just know I ran into a lot of challenges trying to make those.
And I've already reviewed all the times and dates in order to make sure that what I'm offering would fit, or else it would not be good for me to do that. I do have one final request. As I go through, not the top list of committees, but more the bottom list, the committees appointed by County Administrative Office or ad hoc, I just feel like there's some that might be done, I'm not sure. But maybe if the chair and the CAO, when this comes back to us, can figure out which ones have been exhausted and should be terminated and crossed off the list, that way it doesn't look so daunting when we have that many highlighted yellow boxes that we need to try and fill.
And then just another request, Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee, is there anyone that would like to fill the alternate spot on that? Because I am I am still on it and I don't mind continuing, but if there's someone that would like to be on it with me or coast until we get the next person to fill.
I'll do it with you.
Okay.
It's in the evening, isn't it?
It's usually in the evening on a Zoom or, yeah, it's okay. It usually falls on a Monday or something like that, or sometimes a Tuesday, but they've been trying to steer away from that.
Wonder why?
Yeah, well, not just ours, but I know there's other meetings for city representatives, so. Oh, yep, so the Public Defender Oversight Committee, I'm going to need to be to fill that as, since I'm the alternate. And, okay, are there any others that? That peek out at you?
So the Mental Health Board, obviously, I can just, I'm already the alternate, so I can, I'll move into that spot.
Okay. Second Thursday, 1:35, okay. Do you have that same? Okay, yeah, you have that.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, if there's any other requests.
Sure.
I'll open it up.
So with the North Coast EMS, is that one or was there an alternate there, too?
Yeah, I was.
You were the alternate or the?
Yeah, I think there was two board members. There was Tina and myself. And I've been going to those meetings now for quite a bit, since I've been added in there.
You want to be a part of that?
I would just be an alternate, right? Because only one member on that board.
Doesn't say alternate, but I think.
I know, there's only one member.
I think there's only one vote.
Yeah, there's only one vote at those meetings, I'm positive on that.
Yeah.
So I, you know, you can add me back on there as an alternate, I was I was on there unless somebody else wants it.
I think you're familiar with it, Supervisor Simon, so.
Yeah, you can put me as an alternate.
All right.
Sounded like you were volunteering.
Yeah, I was volunteering on that one.
All right, if there's not any, I'll open other comments, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the chambers? I'm not seeing anyone. And then I have no hands up in Zoom, so then I'll bring it back to the board for action and understanding that for juvenile justice, we will come up and talk about that probably next week or so. And then even, what was it, some of the some of the committees that we could possibly take off, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
See if we can dwindle this down a little bit.
Susan and I will work on that and then we'll go from there. Is there anything else? If not, we'll consider action.
I'll attempt at action.
That's good.
So I move that everything stays the same except for these changes, that I will be the primary for the Children's Council instead of the alternate. I will become the primary for the Continuum of Care. I will become the primary for the Emergency Medical Care Committee. I will become the primary, I guess, for Financial Audit Committee, since we need to have somebody that's a primary. For the First Five Commission, Hope Rising. Supervisor Simon will become the primary for Mental Health Advisory Board. Supervisor Simon will become the alternate for North Coast Emergency Medical Services. And Supervisor Pyska will be added to the Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee. And I think that is all that we are changing. Did you want to be on the Scotts Valley?
I just, I'll fill in until.
And and Chair Crandall will be the appointed to the Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council.
And these are temporary?
I think they're always temporary, because if something changes in our lives and we can always bring it back and see that we can change that. And obviously, if we don't make the meetings, we need to be open and transparent about that, so we can make sure that we try to fill those in.
Right, but when there's a new appointed member, we'll take a look at all of this.
Absolutely.
All right. So that's your motion.
I think I got it all. I hope I got it all.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. With briefly, we'll go back to item 6.1 and conduct the Lake County Animal Care and Control Pet of the Week. And so before, I think we have, do we have, we have a dog, right? I can't see.
There's something on the lead.
I didn't know if maybe they brought a goat this time.
It's possible.
Hello, my name is Mary Faschke. I'm working with Lake County Animal Care and Control. We're up at 4949 Hellbush Drive, behind the county jail. Today I have with me this beautiful dog here. She is a training walker coonhound. She's only about eight months old. She's extremely sweet and playful. She gets along great with other dogs. And overall, she's just an awesome dog. She's great in the vehicles and everything. She just wants to play and be loved and be great in a good home. If you have any questions, you can contact us at 707-263-0278. Does anybody have any questions?
She's hiding under the table. That looks like my dog.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no. Come on, it's with me.
I got some love in here.
Okay, well, we're right at 9:44, so we need one more minute. We can move on to the 6.5.
Mr. Chair, I think that we should be able to take care of 5.14 pretty quickly.
Let's knock that in. So 5.14, sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District, adopt resolution authorizing the Lake County Watershed Protection District to sign and enter into Amendment One of the agreement with Civic Well for independent contractor services through the AmeriCorps Civic Spark Fellowship in the amount of $29,000 for one Civic Spark Fellow to develop an aquatic aquatic invasive species outreach assessment improvement plan. And Supervisor Sabatier, I know you you pulled it, so I'll let you go ahead and.
Thank you very much. So we approved of an agreement last year in August for also $29,000, and we're kind of enhancing our policy on the purchasing ordinance. And here, this is above $25,000. And my question is, do we need to waive the bidding? Most likely, this possibly fits within the unique services and goods, but I don't see any comment or any part of RFP or bids or a waiving of the bids. And so that was the question that I had. And I know that I've spoken with CAO Parker and County Council, Ms. Grant as well, and just wondering if they can speak to that to see if that is a necessary thing for us to have to do. I fully support what this is. I just want to make sure that we're consistent in how we're going through that policy.
I have asked Stephen Carter to join us, since he did some initial review of this. There he is.
Sorry, I'm not panel yet. Good morning, Board. Yes, since it is between 25 and 50,000 per the purchasing ordinance and policy, there should be some kind of waiving of the purchasing procedures. And from what I've seen, we've done this in the past and haven't used one, but without what Marina has to say about it, to me, it probably is a simple, it's a unique sole source vendor for this type of activity, especially with the Civic Spark. But yes, it does need to follow the purchasing procedures, in my opinion.
And so Marina, I see you're on.
Hi, good morning, Board. Thank you, Stephen, for that explanation. So I'm more than happy to bring this to the board next week with the formal with outlining clearly the form waiving of the formal bidding. I do recommend and do agree that this is that the formal waiving of the formal bidding process is appropriate, just because if we did do the RFP process, Civic Well and the Civic Spark Fellowship would not submit a bid. This this fellowship, this mentorship is not is not a contract or anything of that nature where it's competitive bidding, it's a mentorship program, as we shared previously, of bringing bringing new ideas and bringing the guidance and the support that we need. So I am more than happy to bring an item next week, if appropriate, or the following week, to properly outline that in the actual agreement.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I'm gonna, I'm not sure if Deputy Director Deli Giannis has access to the documentation, but if it's possible, please work with Stephen Carter to ensure that it asks in our policy to provide documentation to show that it is a unique good and service. Again, I feel Civic Sparks fits that category, so I'm I'm certain that there's something that can be found for that, but that would be what would be needed to provide a cover and support for the unique goods and services. And last question for Deputy Director Deli Giannis, I hope this doesn't delay or put anything to prohibit moving forward at the timeframe that you were looking for. I know that it doesn't start until September, so I don't feel that that is the case, but I just wanted to kind of check in and make sure.
Yes, that is correct. Supervisor Sabatier, thank you for the outlining that concern, and you are absolutely correct. This will not prohibit the momentum that we are moving forward to this, so we're good to go on that end.
Stephen, did you have something else to add? Nope. All right, I'll open it up for the public to comment. Not seeing any, I'll bring it back to the board for, well, we will come back to it next week. So thank you for your for your help on that, Deputy Director Deli Giannis and Stephen, and we'll we will come back and see this next week. All right, with that, we will move on to our 6.5. Public hearing where the Board of Supervisors will consider an ordinance adopting the California Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. And it looks like we have Mr. Collins here. If you'd like to come sit up up here, if you'd like, yeah, either side, it's up to you.
I'll get this on the side.
Well, that way you have each have a microphone. There you go.
I have some handouts, too, for you guys, if you'd like them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, this is Director Darby. I'm just here to introduce Chief Building Official, William Collins. He goes by Bill. He had me stuck there for a moment. And he's going to, he did the work on the M Welo ordinance and he will present it to you today.
Alright. Hello. So the Model Efficiency, sorry, the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, or also known as M Welo, was put into place to reduce the use of water to landscape projects around the state. According to the State Water Resources Board, they're saying, they're claiming that 50% of water directed to to urban areas is used for irrigation for landscapes. Jurisdictions are required to adopt 49.2.6, and there's some letters, there's about five sections they're supposed to adopt of the Model Efficiency, of the State Model Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. The California Green Building Code Sections 4.3 and 5.3 is adopted already by Lake County, require that we either enforce a local water ordinance or that we enforce the State of California's Department of Water Resources Model Efficient Landscape Ordinance, M Welo. In my opinion, due to the fact that the projects that we see up here, usually somebody comes in and has an acre lot or something and they drop a manufactured home on there is a big part of what we're doing here. Most of the projects that we go to do not include landscape. They're just, they're building a structure here due to the fact that they don't have a bunch of money to, you know, to make this nice landscaped area out front in the backyard. So the majority of the projects would not, do not even come in to, need to comply with this. The, the, the trigger is for new construction projects equalling 500 square feet of landscape or rehabilitated landscape projects with 2,500 square feet of landscape. So the majority of what we see that this would apply to are like, we have a apartment complex going up in Kelseyville. They're doing a bunch of fake grass, things like that, to make sure that they're not using all the water. I provided you guys with some pictures of what I searched online and what my, what online says that they're supposed to look like. And the pictures comply with what I've read of what a M Welo approved landscape should look like. Basically, you're trying to cut down the water usage, use drought tolerant stuff. They want you to shade. They want you to put in some fertilizer, topsoil, things like that. If you're, if you come in to get a building permit and you are not planning on doing the landscaping 500 square feet or more, then you are not required to comply with this. If you build the house and then in a year or two, you decide to do some landscaping, unless it's landscaping that requires a permit, you do not need to comply. I printed out some stuff from the M Welo Guidebook. That's what's on the information here. So they claim that it meant that M Welo eliminates or minimizes environmental health dangers such as, and there's, some of these don't really apply to Lake County, but a few of them are really important to us. One, wildfires are spread due to flammable and dry plants. Because they want you to water your stuff and they want you to put stuff in there that's not going to die if it doesn't get a lot of water. Contaminated water due to improper design and installation of backflow protection devices. Anybody that's getting city water, you make sure the backflow is installed correctly, make sure that we're not getting, especially with underground piping, it's a big concern about backflow. Slip and fall accidents, as well as flooding and pondings of streets, sidewalks and water due to irrigation runoff. Because they're limiting how you can spray your water, where it's supposed to go, with the type of sprayers they're using. Trip and fall accidents resulting from exposed tree roots due to improper irrigation. And injuries sustained by landscape maintenance crews working in street medians. So we had a choice of either adopt, since we already have the California Green Building Code adopted and it specifies, it refers you back to the California Water Resources M Welo. When I talked to them, I had a meeting with them, a Zoom meeting with them a couple of months ago, and they said that we only had to adopt a certain portion because we were already adopted the rest of it. We made the determination that it was better to put it all in one, adopt the whole section, put it all in one spot in the county code versus going to the California Green Building Code and having you go to the Water Resources Board and then also go into these, this ordinance that they say has to be in or adopted. And by the way, the 492.6A, 3B, C, D, and G, all has to do with putting in fertilizer, tilling the topsoil, things like that to make it to where the roots of plants can grow down and more.
Supervisor Sabatia?
Thank you for bringing this. I do have a question because one of the words that really stuck out to me when I read through this and during your presentation is urban. The use of the word urban, and we're not very urban. And I'm wondering, can this, what would be acceptable to the state? Because obviously, the state wants us to either do our own water efficiency ordinance or follow this. Is it possible to say in the community growth boundaries, you have to follow this? Would that be acceptable? It's just.
I do not, I do not believe so because when I read the California Green Building Code, which is adopted by us as well, and we're not allowed to reduce the, we have to go with more stringent if we want to adopt something. We can't reduce the requirements. So the Green Building Code kicks us over to the California State Water Resources, M Welo. And then when I talked to them, I said, well, I'm already got that adopted. Why should I, why do I need to adopt this other, this single portion of your, of your M Welo ordinance? You know, why are you asking me to adopt just this one section when I already have it set up that my, my Green Building Code sends me over there? And they didn't have a very good answer there. I talked to three people and they got their supervisor and pretty much just said that we have to, we have to either adopt an ordinance that's more stringent than what they require, or we have to use theirs, and that we also have to adopt this, this section into our code. It didn't make sense to me why. Yeah. Yeah, and 492.6 has got to do with the landscape design plan. And like I was saying, I don't think that we can reduce any of the requirements. I think it specifically said that it has to be more stringent. We can, we can adopt something that's more stringent, or we have to go to the State Model Efficiency, Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance.
And there's no separation within M Welo, whether you're on well or special district water or anything like that? Doesn't have an acreage maximum or minimum or anything like that?
Not that I have seen. I read through a bunch of stuff on it. I've been doing a lot of research on this to find out exactly what our requirements are here because we, is my understanding, it is not being enforced before I got here. So when it come on my plate that we were supposed to get this adopted, I've been doing a lot of research trying to find out what we need to do. And like I was saying, what's going to happen, what my, what my vision is, is that there are some checklists that you fill out at the counter. And if your property doesn't meet these, the 500 square feet, if you're not planning on putting 500 square feet, if you're putting a single family dwelling or something, you're not planning on putting a 500 square feet of landscape. And if you're going to say, no, I'm not, I don't have the money for that right now, then there is no requirement for you. You fill out the checklist that says that you're not doing it and you don't have to submit a landscape plan. But as soon as you say that you're going to do 500 square feet or more of landscape in the checklist, then you're going to have to fill out and provide a landscape plan. And like I said, and it's only if, when you read it, it talks about only if there's a design review, a building permit review, or a permit required. So if you built the home and then in a few years you want to put in your landscape, it is my interpretation that you don't have to comply with this because there's no plan review required, there's no design review for, we don't have any ordinance here that's requiring a design review for a, somebody's private property, a single family dwelling, it's property on a quarter acre that they're going to put in some landscape.
As long as you don't trigger anything.
Correct.
Vice Chair Pyska?
Yeah, I appreciate that we're moving towards compliance with this. I just came back from LA County and the drought apparently doesn't exist there. Everything is very lush and green. And so, you know, this is definitely the direction we need to go in. I think there's a lot of information here. There was a lot that you all emailed me yesterday. I think what would be really helpful for us and the public is to see a presentation on what this changes for us, so everybody has a clear understanding. But I'd also like to see how we could kind of customize this for our county. And maybe that's something that the drought task force could work on. We adopt the necessary codes to come into compliance, but how can we enhance it for our rural communities? We know when people build a house, they don't submit landscaping. That's not, that's something that happens in our county. You know, that's something that comes down the road when you have more money and you can kind of do work over time. So that's something that we need to address. That's kind of a loophole that's going to be outstanding, no matter where you live. You could, a couple of years down the road, put in a 5,000 square foot lawn and that's going to be a problem. So those are my suggestions. I would like this to come back in the near future with a presentation that we, that the public can clearly understand, we can understand, kind of bring all the pieces together. And then some next steps on how we can enhance and customize it for our county.
Ms. Grant, did you have something to add?
Oh, I was just going to say that what the law does require is that there has to be this type of water efficient landscape ordinance and it has to be at least as effective as the state model or you simply apply the state model. But Supervisor Pyska is correct, there's a great deal of components to the model. And also a great deal of preparation that has to be done, as I'm sure the Chief Building Official knows, in terms of the documentation for landscape documentation when that need arises. And there are a lot of distinctions that are made depending upon the environmental circumstances. So it's not, it's not something you can cut and paste into. It really does require some analysis when it's applicable.
Yeah, and one other thing I forgot to mention, I love that gray water is part of this. This is something that I've been bringing up since I came here. And how can we really make this easy for everybody to either retrofit in their homes or for new construction? We, we know that's going to affect special districts. They really need us to be embracing gray water procedures. So I just, I'm delighted to see that that's in there and I think that we can enhance that too. Yeah.
And just so everybody knows, the M Welo considers gray water, recycled water, all that stuff in the same usage. They don't, they don't separate it. So if you're using gray water, that you're, you know, that you're harvesting or something, or stormwater harvesting, you don't get more grass. It's, you get the, it's all the same amount of waters. They're considering all the waters together. They call it a one water rule.
Yep.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, always as we're implementing these ordinances, you know, we went through this when we were rebuilding after the fires. And we all know how challenging that was for everybody on the budgets or depending what they had in their insurance to rebuild. This is one more cost. That's always my concern when we're doing this. One more cost of somebody who may not be able to build that home they want to or rebuild it. So understanding that for a, what kind of plan is it again? A landscaping plan?
Yes.
Do we have any idea what that costs to do a landscaping plan on a single fam, you know, a home, a residential home for somebody? I mean, because these costs also affected folks when we were coming back and rebuilding from the fires, when they're like, oh, everybody needs sprinklers in their homes now. You know, and so folks had to make that decision whether they had enough money to build a stick-built home or if they were going to use a manufactured home. And when you're rebuilding your home after it burns, you know, with just how you've been through and everything, every little cost counts as we're moving through that process. So just understanding that and what this is going to add on to somebody building a home is, you know, I think something we all need to consider when we're doing that because we already know the housing stock is down. It's a challenge right now to build homes. Interest rates are going up. You know, so anyway, understanding those costs that we're going to be adding on, you know, home. Because you're saying, yeah, they could be exempt if they say they're not going to do something. But, you know, usually most folks, especially in some areas, take on Hidden Valley, other areas, you know, they may be coming in with a landscaping plan now. So one more added cost to building a home here. So we need more homes, but we're going to continue putting ordinances and, you know, these stumbling blocks in front of people. To me, you know, every time we do something like that, it's a challenge, you know? Because they say, oh, it's only another 2,500. Oh, it's another $5,000. That's a lot. That could be your counters, that could be the rooms that you're building. We all encountered it, we saw it. And like I said, you know, manufactured homes are much better than they were back in the 70s and 60s and 70s. But some folks, after rebuilding, after the fires and stuff, had to go in that direction because you're on, you're on a limited budget. So that's my concern. I know you guys probably don't have the specific answers, but any idea on that would be the education process I'd like to see.
Yeah, so to start off with, that's part of the reason, the cost is part of the reason. And the other reason is that we don't see very many people doing it. It's part of the reason why I wanted to stick with the model code and not, not enhance it more. Kind of what Supervisor Pyska was mentioning, adding some things in for ours to keep it from skirting the system. But if, as we do that, it's going to require people, more people to have to comply with this. To follow up with your question, I don't know the price, but there is something in the guidebook that talks about that the landscape design plan and irrigation design plan must be signed by licensed landscape architect, licensed landscape contractor, or an authorized person per California Business and Professionals Code and the California Code of Regulations. So it's not going to be, you know, it's not, generally, if you want to build your home, we'll let you make your own plan if you can do it and it looks neat and we can understand it. You're going to go prescriptive. It's not a problem. You could come in with all your stuff. If you draw it out fine, you could make your own plan and we'll give you a permit for it. This right here says that you're not going to get, you can't do that. So you're going to have to pay somebody, a professional, to make that plan for you.
Yeah, and I mean, just being realistic, that's not going to happen. It's not in anybody's budget. I'm four years into my house and I'm still out there every weekend with my shovel trying to figure it out. So, you know, it's, I think, when I talk about customizing it to our community, like giving suggestions for, you know, what is appropriate to grow here, what's not, what's sustainable, you know, how can you use your your gray water and your catchment water? Those are the kinds of things that I'm talking about. Not necessarily making it more cumbersome for people that are trying to rebuild because the majority of the people are building, the majority of the people that are building just don't have this in their budget.
Yeah, and when I look back at what I've seen since I've been here, we haven't got, we're not getting anybody hardly that's coming in and talking about doing this landscaping, you know? We haven't provided them with the thing to do the checklist yet because we're still working on it. But my vision of what I see when I go out on inspections and check on stuff is that hardly anybody's putting landscaping in up here. So if, with the model code out, that they're saying that we have to enforce, I don't think that very many people are going to be affected because I don't think that many people are, are doing that kind of project. Now, you know, a lot of times, somebody's got this dream of making this big house there and we're struggling with this. Sometimes they come and they bite off a little bit more than they can chew. And, you know, at the beginning, you say, oh, I got this money and oh, yeah, I'm going to do this, this and this. And then you just get like halfway through the project, you know, you're coming up short and then, you know, now we're out four years on trying to get the permit closed out.
Yeah. Well, again, I think it would be helpful for us to see a presentation on, you know, how this is going to change things the day that we adopt this ordinance. And suggestions on how, moving forward, we can improve that process.
Ms. Grant, did you have something to add before?
I was just going to say that I think that a presentation from what Supervisor Pyska is talking about can include a lot of definitions to make sure everyone's clear on what applies where. And it's, it's never a question of trying to avoid the, the requirements under an ordinance that the state imposes. It's a question of how best to comply within, within Lake County's environmental landscape. And again, it has to be as responsive as possible, not necessarily more stringent, but it has to get you to the same place. And information like hardscape and areas that would require irrigation, et cetera, all of those things can be factors that can be considered by people. If they're planning it at the time they're considering construction, it may be easier for them than if they plan out, you know, a lush tropical garden and then realize, oh my heaven, that would cost more than that just cost me to build the house. So those are the kind of So those are the kinds of things that a presentation might include for your board.
Supervisor Sabate, and then Director Vice Chair.
Yeah, I have a question for Ms. Grant. You read back to us that if we create our own ordinance, it needs to be effectively the same? Is that the exact words? Or, just because, what does that mean if that is the exact words from Welo? Because again, I can't help, I'm stuck, sorry if I'm stuck, but I'm stuck on the 50% of the water is used for urban irrigation. Well, okay, that's just not correct for us. I know where I live, there's not enough irrigation going on. I wish people had more landscaped yards, but we don't do that. So putting in rules and regulations that seem to go against what we're even, we're not abusing the system, unlike your experience that you just shared with us in your recent days, I just, I'm wondering what effectively the same might mean? And can we maybe explain enough so that we can look at specific areas of the county saying, if you're on city water, or if you're in a community growth boundary, this is the expectation, because you're a part of a larger body of water that's being shared by everybody, and you can't abuse it by having huge amount of irrigation needs when there's so many other people that are part of the same system versus if you're in the middle of a 200-acre area and you're just by yourself? I don't know, I'm just, it's not specific what I'm saying, but I'm just kind of curious if we can create rules, or if it's literally this is the base and we could only make it more stringent?
It has to be at least as effective as the model. Now, this is all codified in the California Code of Regulation, so I can read that from you, to you in just a minute. But keeping in mind that the overall purpose of this ordinance, and again, it does, as has been pointed out several times, it speaks to conditions in an urban setting. So, but you're still talking about, for example, creating conditions to support life in the soil by reducing compaction, incorporating organic matter that increases water retention, minimizing energy use by reducing irrigation water requirements, conserving water by capturing and reusing rainwater and gray water whenever possible, protecting air and water quality by reducing power equipment, protecting existing habitat, and creating new habitat by choosing local native plants, climate-adapted non-natives, and avoiding invasive plants. So those are the overarching goals of the Welo.
Vice Chair Piscata.
Yeah, and so one of the codes, why I had had spoken with previous staff about this is, you know, when you're doing new construction, you plum in your, or you stem in your gray water. So it's there if you ever want it. You don't have to use it, but it's like a really simple little thing that you do when you're building your house. And then down the road, if anybody wants to use that for irrigation, it's there, but we don't have that right now. I did it in my house, it makes a huge, I water so many things with that. So those are the types of steps that I would like to see, and education too, for the community, like when you're building a house, take these steps. It costs you sometimes dollars to do it now, rather than thousands of dollars down the road.
And just to add to the conversation, I don't disagree with some of the ideas that are in there, and I think that I'd like to better understand what does effectively similar to what's being proposed, and what is their definition of rural, and can we look at, this is mandatory in these areas, and this is highly recommended for these areas? Because again, I am also concerned about the costs, where we're trying to build more houses, but yet at the same time, we're creating further burdens for those that want to build not just houses, but a nice property. So I know you don't see many of those, I'd love to see more of those, but we're going to see the same or less if we go ahead and move forward with exactly what's being proposed. And I hate the idea of using a loophole where you don't put it on your main permit, but then you go back afterwards. I'd love to get people to comply and do the things we're looking to have done, but not necessarily forcing them and mandating it in all across the board, because it's just that one word rural, and I just feel like this is very heavy towards the Bay Area, high-density residential areas, LA area, things like that, not in a much more rural landscape.
Well, and it's natural landscaping that a lot of people do here. It's not, you don't have to have the front lawn and the back lawn, you're not.
Well, in fact, we shouldn't have any lawn.
It just doesn't work.
We've had that discussion here before.
And I would like to just piggyback on what Adita was talking about, you know, the California Code of Regulation said, what she said, but the California Green Building Code, which we're not allowed to reduce restrictions in there either, says that it's whichever is more stringent, our local ordinance or the model ordinance.
I think the presentation will be a good, it'll be a good measure also for people to understand, and I'm looking at it from a dispute standpoint. So if we lay it out, I just, I have a lot of neighbors amongst neighbors that come, like we had one today, that may have an interpretation of the ordinance and say, well, they are doing this, and they didn't come to you if they don't understand the full realm of what you're bringing forth, if that makes sense. And I know you deal with it just as much. Or if someone's building, and, you know, they might see something that's less than 500 feet or whatever, but they'll still make the complaint, and then you're back into that. I just, I look at it from that standpoint, because I get so many of them. So, and it's just the interpretation, you know, that's all.
Yeah, we're getting a bunch of calls like that as well, and I can see them coming to us as well. And we could prepare something for you, come back for September 6, BOAS meeting, would that work for you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It works.
Yeah, and just one more thing is, you know, you mentioned firewise landscaping, that's a big component for all of us. And then the zone zero around the house too, we need to have five feet of no vegetation around your foundation. Those are two things that, you know, may not be required in an urban setting, but would be applicable here.
It'll be September 13th, we don't meet on the 6th.
All right.
Labor Day.
All right. This is the 13th, okay?
Yeah.
All right. All right. So I'll go ahead and I think.
One more comment or suggestion, maybe to the C O and maybe to public services, but this building here, a lot of folks come into it. And right now, we have a lush green thing going all the way around it, and we're watering it, and some of the stuff we're reading here, it runs out on the sidewalk, you guys have seen that before probably, you know, when it's being watered. So maybe as we're moving through this process, a great example of what we're talking about right around the courthouse, as we're transitioning into this, you know, obviously, climate change, fire disaster, would be neat. We could showcase, hey, this is what we've done here at the courthouse. I just think it'd be an opportunity for us to educate and say, this is what we're talking about when we're moving into this. So just as, I know Lars is probably like, what's he talking about? But I didn't go over that with them, Lars, I'm not. But anyway, just a suggestion, that would be something neat, and maybe we could tie that into the Risk Reduction Authority, and, you know, having some examples that people are looking at as they're coming into the courthouse. So just throw it out there.
I would take it one step further, and we should be leading by example with all of our properties, whether it's defensive space or this.
Yeah. All right. I will open it up for the public. Joan, if you'd like to come up and state your name for the record, and we'll start in three minutes.
Recently this year, I have represented the public in a committee that is trying to get a Big Valley Basin Water update. And it's very difficult to work on a committee that is, Marina Delagiaris has done a really good job, but it's very difficult to comply with an ordinance that's local, that will satisfy the Department of Water Resources. The rules on the committee are impossible. And do you have a committee put together to work out your ordinance?
Not at this time.
Okay. I just want to warn you that it is very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to say that we would definitely will be working with the Department of Water Resources on this ordinance, and of course, including administration.
Thank you. Todd, I see your hand up.
Yes. Yeah, you're wondering why Bay Barrow Services is weighing in on this, but it really has nothing to do with that. I want to acknowledge what Moak said about, I'm sorry, Supervisor Simon said about leading by example. I'm almost 60 years old, lived through the mega drought of 1976 and 77, and appreciate this conversation. I also remember years ago, the Press Democrat in Santa Rosa, their building used to have this huge green lawn in front. And in, you know, in response to water conservation, they stopped watering it and put up a sign that said, brown is beautiful. And so we have to learn to adapt to the climate in which we live, and I just, just, I'm sorry, I couldn't resist. I had to weigh in on this conversation, because we need to be water-wise, especially with climate change. And so I appreciate this discussion. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Matt Caff. And then, so with that, I don't see any other hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board, close public input, and I see Supervisor Sabate, you have your pen up.
I just want to clarify a little bit of confusion that I got after the public comment that we received from Joan Moss. We have an ordinance to approve in front of us today, which basically says we're going to be following Welo. Okay, because I heard that you will be working with Water Resources, more of the implementation of the ordinance?
Yes, I just want to get their feedback, because the Department of Water Services is the ones that actually implemented the Chapter 2.7 the entire, they had feedback on the entire ordinance, so M. Welo ordinance for Chapter 2.7. So I think that their input would be beneficial with whatever we come up with, or we were proposing.
But the ordinance is being proposed today, are we?
Right, but we're coming back. I understood, I think, that we were not going to vote on the ordinance today, and that we're coming back on September 13th to make a presentation for it, ordinance, and that I think that will give us ample time to reach out to Department of Public Works.
I didn't quite split that in my, in my mind, that I thought we were going to move forward and then do a presentation to explain what it is we're moving forward with, so, okay.
I apologize if I misunderstood.
No, that's just me. It seems everyone else was on the same page, I fell off.
All right. Any other comments or, okay, looks like we can come back to this on September 13th, and we appreciate the presentation, and we'll see you then.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'm going to entertain a short break before we get on to our next item, and we will be back at 10:30. All right, welcome back from the break. We will go on to our next item, our 6.6 update on 2022 drought conditions of Clear Lake. And with that, we have Deputy Director Marina Delagiaris here, and she will give the presentation.
Hi, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Marina Delagiaris, Deputy Water Resources Director. I am joined by some of my colleagues and mentors, some of us in the audience, and some folks joining us via Zoomed. I am joined today with Director of Public Works and Water Resources, Scott DeLeon, Director of Special Districts, Scott Harder, Director of Public Services, Lars Ewing, Director of Environmental Health, Craig Weatherby. And we also have some friends from OES, Sheriff Martin on the call, and Leah Sattlet as well, OES manager. We are excited to bring to you this morning our update on 2022 drought conditions. Yes, we are still in a drought, unfortunately, and we are here to provide an update to you all. So with that being said, I know that I can talk about this all day. Unfortunately, we do not have all day to talk about drought conditions and where we're at and next steps. So I have highlighted some talking points that we'll be showcasing today, including current and historical drought conditions, current and predicted Clear Lake lake levels, groundwater conditions, Clear Lake water quality, including drinking water as well, county facilities, water conservation efforts. We'll be providing an update on our drought work groups that we have in the county, and then, of course, next steps. So with that being said, I have this graph here with all sorts of pretty colors. And what this graph is, I grabbed it from the U.S. Drought Monitor. This drought is, or this graph is a living product drought product, or living product drought map here. And what you can see is the levels on the northern part of the graph, those outline drought conditions dating back from the 1900s all the way to 2017. This is when the last available data was collected. Again, the U.S. Drought Monitor does a great job of collecting this data, and these are, these data is collected from tree rings, and what they do is they blend tree ring reconstruction on instruments data to estimate average, the Palmer Modified Drought Index, a lot of big words, just indicating that this is a collection of data to develop the average of drought conditions. So on the northern part of the graph, as mentioned, this is outlining abnormally dry to exceptionally dry, with abnormally dry here indicating yellow, to exceptionally dry in the darker red and the maroon color. Now, on the lower portion of this graph you have here, this indicates precipitation, again, ranging from abnormally wet to exceptionally wet. And what this, what this graph shows us is, again, this is not the first drought that we've experienced, nor will it be the last drought. But you can get an idea of the precipitation conditions that we've had since the 1900s. Again, we are comparing these drought to 1977, which you can see here on the graph. Moving forward to current drought conditions, statewide, again, the Western U.S., we are all experiencing drought conditions. Unfortunately, we have been for the past few years. We are in, well into our third consecutive dry year. Average 37.2 million people in California by are affected by the drought, with 116 counties with USDA disaster designations. So as you can see on the right-hand side, this was collected as of yesterday, and this shows where at in the state is exceptionally, what kind of, is experiencing what kind of drought, from abnormally dry, which is 100% of the state, to exceptional drought, which is mostly focused here in the Central Valley. Here in Lake County, we are experiencing 100% of Lake County environments and communities are experiencing severe drought. And what this means is that grazing lands can be inadequate. Fire season is longer with burn intensity, dry fuels, and large fire spatial extent, which we are well familiar with, unfortunately. And trees can oftentimes be stressed, plants increase reproductive mechanisms, and wildlife diseases can increase. Now, 7.5% of Lake County environments and communities are experiencing extreme drought conditions, and this is focused more on the eastern side of the county. Now, what this means is that livestock needs expensive supplemental feed, cattle and horses are oftentimes sold, little pasture remains, fruit trees bud early, and producers begin irrigating in the winter. Also, fire season lasts year-round, with fires occurring in typically wet parts of the state, and burn bans can be implemented. Of course, water is inadequate for agriculture, wildlife, and urban needs, reservoirs are extremely low, and hydropower is restricted. Again, only 7.5% of Lake County, based off of the data collected by the drought monitor system, is experiencing extreme drought, but the majority of the county, again, we are experiencing our severe drought conditions. Now, this graph here I have on the left, this is again, collected by drought.gov. This is an awesome resource that we have available on the Water Resources website, where they collect real-time data and all sorts of data as it relates to drought conditions, not only for our county, but for the Western U.S. as well. This graph indicates real-time stream flow conditions. This graph was also collected last year, and these are graphs, these are stream gauges collected by the U.S. Geological Survey. And what this map outlines is it compares stream flow conditions compared to historical conditions. So the map depicts stream flow conditions as computed at USGS stream gauges, and the color represents real-time stream flow compared to percentiles of historical daily stream flow, stream flow for the day of the year. I have outlined the color of these stream flows, and I will go through each stream flow gauge that they have. So here on the upper right-hand side, we have Cache Creek Stream Flow at Clear Lake Oaks, and that is experiencing normal stream flow as of yesterday. Cache Creek at Clear Lake Oaks and Kelsey Creek at Kelseyville are experiencing below normal stream flow conditions. And then in the southern portion of the county, we have Cache Creek in Lower Lake and Pooda Creek at Gwinoc are experiencing much below normal. Again, all this information, including the stream flow conditions, can be found on our Water Resources website, and this was data collected as of yesterday. Now here, we will shuffle on over to the current and predicted Clear Lake lake levels. Folks have seen this before during previous drought updates, and we also have this map that is updated on a bi-weekly basis on the Water Resources website. Resources website. So here you can see, the brown line right here indicates the 2022 stage. So as of July 31st, we were at negative 1.6 Rumsay. Today, of August 9th, we were at negative 1.36 Rumsay. Last year, on this day, we were at negative 1.6 Rumsay. And here, we also have predicted lake levels. I don't want folks to get super hunkered down on the predictions. Again, these are just based off of our models. And then we have the comparisons from 1977 and then also 2014 drought years here.
Which color?
Yes.
Was last year?
So last year, stage 2021 is this yellow. Yep. And then we have 2014, which is the gray, and then 1977 is the blue dotted line.
I just wanted to make sure, because from what I've been reading, we are lower this year than we were last year. But I heard you say negative 1.3, and last year we were at negative 1.6. Did I misunderstand?
So just to confirm, July 31st, we were at negative 1.16. That was...
1.6, gotcha.
And then today, we are at negative 1.36.
Thank you.
Yep. So as we know, these low lake levels impact our accessibility to the lake, as folks are well aware. And this is just an update of the current public boat ramps. I will let Director Ewing later in the presentation give an update of the boat ramps here. But here we have the public boat ramps that are open and the ones that are closed. Again, this resource is available on the Water Resources website. We have a new drought hub that we are working on. Right now, if you go to the Water Resources website, it's on the far right-hand side. It says under construction, because we are working on it. But all this information will be on the website by the end of the week. So going back to this graph, right now, the ramps that are closed is Third Street at Lakeport, Lakeside Park, Lucerne Harbor, Keeling Park, and Rodman Slough. Again, this graphic is one that folks have seen before, and these are based off of the depth at the end of the boat ramps, which we have done the, on the boots ground, measurements of measuring where the ramp ends and the measurement method that we conducted to get such measurement.
I have a question on that, if you can go back. How can we have a ramp open if the depth at the end of the ramp is zero feet? People just go further into the lakebed with their trailer, or? Sorry, should I keep my questions till the end?
So Lars Ewing, Public Services Director, and I can talk to a lot of this. First off, Lakeside Park, while it does show closed, there are two boat ramps there. One is closed, one is open. And now they're all closed. So...
Oh, nice. That is beautiful. Nice.
So a lot of, coming back to this, the depth at the end of the boat ramp, there's a lot more to it than simply the depth. A lot of these boat ramps have rocks that might cause some impacts there. Some have sandbars that impact it more than the boat ramp itself. So if a boat ramp, or if really the lake bed is deeper beyond the end of the boat ramp, then that could be accessible. So each one is a lot more, there's a lot more to factor in than simply the depth.
And just as a quick aside question, that's the depth of the cement boat ramp, where the further back you go, the more potential there is for a truck to get stuck, a trailer to, things like that?
That was my understanding of when I believe Water Resources did these dips. And yeah, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
All right, perfect. And this is why we have the experts here joining us. Thank you. Thank you Director Ewing. So here, I just want to highlight a little bit of the groundwater conditions and dry wells. And if Director Weatherby is on, I will let him elaborate near the end of the presentations on well permitting as it relates to the current drought. So again, this is a map grabbed this morning from the California Department of Water Resources Drywell Reporting. As you can see, it shows where these dry wells are reported. And I would just like to note that this is volunteer-based. There is no ground truthing verification on this database. What the county is in the process of doing is having our own internal database of when these wells are reported. Folks can either call Environmental Health or us at Water Resources if they have dry wells reported. And what we do is we collect that information, and we are in the process of compiling our own database and doing the fact-truthing as well, to make sure that we have the most accurate data available and have a proper understanding of the wells reported. So again, there have no been dry wells reported in the last 30 days. We are still at 30 wells reported in the California Department of Water Resources portal, dry wells. We have the majority of these ending in the, being placed in the South County, and a few of them right outside and within our Big Valley groundwater basin. Moving over to Clear Lake water quality, I don't want to elaborate too much on this, but my focus for this part of the presentation is just highlighting that not only does drought impact our water quantity, but it impacts our water quality, which I know folks are well aware of. So here, I just have a snippet of this real-time map that is available on the Water Resources website. This is actually a real-time stream flow wind map. I don't have the map loaded here because it takes a long time to load, but it's really cool to show where the wind is moving on the lake in that real time. And as you can see right now, the majority of the wind is pushing down to the South County in the lower portion of the arms, which is not uncommon. And we know, we are all well aware of the bloom that is happening right now in the Oaks arm. How drought can impact our water quality is of course, our lake, even though it is a very large lake, it is very, very shallow. So as we have our lake lowering in terms of water level, that is the perfect habitat for our already eutrophic lake, meaning very nutrient-rich lake, to provide habitat for our aquatic plant friends, including cyanobacteria, who is not necessarily our friend. The figure here on the right is the HAB Incident Report Map, which is sourced from the California Water Quality Monitoring Council. And this just indicates different HAB sites, which is harmful agu blooms, that are identified in our lake. A lot of this data is collected by our friends from Big Valley Rancheria, who also have a really awesome website, and they do really good communications and updates with the community in terms of these blooms. And they work very collaboratively with our department and other departments, including Public Health and Environmental Health, Special Districts, when these blooms are created. Now, with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Scott Harder, Director of Special Districts, to talk about drought and our drinking water.
Yes, thank you Marina. I can get into the details for our five water systems, but it's important to note that there are roughly 70 water systems, public water systems within the county that are substantial in size, not including small stuff like Little Coffee Key, Ostana, the end of Lakeport and what have you. And it's important that if customers or constituents out in the county have questions about their drinking water quality, they reach out directly to their drinking water provider. You know, some of the things that we're all dealing with are water quality due to the low lake levels. The drought has impacted some water systems' well levels. So you're seeing various impacts depending on the water system itself. And we're all reacting in appropriate, but different manners to address the drought as it's affecting each of us. Specifically for the special districts managed water systems, we've got five around the county. Two of them are surface water treatment plants on Clear Lake. One is a surface water treatment plant up in Spring Valley, and the other two are well-based systems. So for our well-based systems, there's almost no impact at all. The well levels have been stable. There's no impact to quality or quantity of the water. And Kelseyville and Conotee are two well-based systems are operating pretty well optimally. Spring Valley is a surface water treatment plant. It's out, draws its water from Cache Creek. There's a gathering in Cache Creek, which gets the water from Indian Valley Reservoir. There's no current impacts on the water quality or the water quantity, but we are monitoring Indian Valley Reservoir and keeping in touch with Yolo County to, you know, keep an eye on what those projections look like and adapt. Spring Valley, we were also awarded almost $1 million, $880,000 for a grant project to develop some source redundancy. So that project is in the environmental review stage currently, and we are seeking to look at the option of possibly a well out there to provide redundant water source in case Indian Valley Reservoir is, you know, less than, less than available, if it's not available for the full quantity. Soda Bay Water System is over on the south side of Clear Lake there. And we're seeing very minimal impacts there due to the drought. The water quality has degraded. It's requiring slightly more chemicals, floculins to help with filtering, and chlorine to help with disinfection before it goes out into the system. And the plant runtimes are up just a hair, but that's typical in the summertime. People typically irrigate, even in spite of the drought, people typically irrigate through the summer. So we're seeing slightly increased demand out in Soda Bay and slightly increased canopy usage, but not too significant at all. North Lakeport, we are seeing significant impacts due to the drought. The intake at that water system was at minus 3 Rumsay until last summer, and then we were able to complete a project to lower the intake level down to minus 5.5 Rumsay. But with the lake at minus 1.36 this morning, there's only four feet of water above where our water intake is there. So when we pull the water in, we're pulling a lot of surface influenced water. So the water quality is pretty poor. We're seeing significant increase in our chemicals, our floculent and chlorine use to produce that drinking water, and we're seeing increased plant runtimes. At North Lakeport, we were also awarded a DWR grant, a drought relief grant, for $1.5 million. It's a project that's true prompt. We're looking at potentially extending the lake intake so we can gather some additional depth over where that falls in at, and explore the possibility of a well out there as well as a redundant water source. So that's kind of the status of where drinking water is on the lake. We do have a drinking water group. It's kind of an ad hoc group of some of the water systems that meet on a fairly regular basis to discuss, you know, plans and methods to deal with the drought and what we're seeing, what we're experiencing, what's working, what's not working. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then we're going to move on over to county facilities and water use. And I'm going to bring up Director Ewing to elaborate.
All right. Well, thank you again. So we breezed through these slides a bit, and that's all there is. It's one slide. And I wanted to talk to each of these. First off, there's two images. Both of those pictures were taken on Friday, and both are county parks. One obviously is green and one is brown. And it's just to depict that during the time of droughts, there are, the public are going to see different landscapes at different parks. You heard Scott Harder talk about the different water districts around the county. And that, these parks are all irrigated by either different water districts or pulling water from the lake. So each one is uniquely different, and each district has different triggers where irrigation may be, need to be reduced and different levels. So the point is that as we progress through the drought, one of the impacts that the public is going to see at parks is a, you know, some browning. And it may be that one park right down the road is green and another park is brown, and that might help to understand why. So whether it's a difference in the water districts thresholds for when we reduce irrigation, or in the case of some parks that are on the lake, we have water intakes that Scott Harder mentioned earlier. We have some that are on piers or out on breakwaters. And those are typically just for irrigation on that one park. So extending that or dropping it to a lower level is certainly not cost-effective when it's, we're talking about just irrigation at a park as opposed to an entire water district. So there are some other impacts there aside from just, from just a water district. It could be that we pull from the lake. So the other points on here, one is conserving water. Let's break it back down to grounds here. A few things that we can do, and I want to encourage the public to do, and that is, you know, just very simple things that many people already know about, and that is, one, to cut the grass high. If you cut it low, it stresses it, it requires more water, it exposes the soil below. Water earlier in the day prevents evaporation. And then the last thing that I wanted to point out here is that sign, conserve water. So as we reduce water, obviously, there's going to be a browning of the landscaping. And by doing that intentionally and putting a sign out to show that this is intentional, it gets the word out there and it passes the message along. Now, that is probably a good segue back to the previous agenda item, that I apologize I wasn't here, but I got the gist of it. And that's, you know, that is something that we can look at doing here. I did get an opportunity to talk to the facility superintendent, and the irrigation out here is actually, in his terms, relatively low, very low. That's not a, it's not a hard and fast number, so I can't tell you that it's a, you know, it's a water-free environment, but it is certainly minimal. But that's something that we will, we will take a look at. I want to transition a bit, talk about facilities. The last slide, well, not slide, but that last image there, water conservation in a building. So take this building for example. Some different measures that we have taken over, over the years, faucets, putting in low-flow faucets, aerators and infrared sensors, so they only, you only get the water when you're actually there. Toilets, putting in low-flow toilets, within reason. There still needs to be some flow. So certainly in an older facility that has certain plumbing issues, yes, we do need that water to continue. Putting in waterless urinals and simple things like putting in bottle filling stations. So there are certainly some measures that we take, and there are others that we can continue to take. But what I want to encourage is the facilities, the county facilities, so those occupants, as you identify, you know, a desire to reduce the landscaping at your, or watering in the landscaping at your, at your building, feel free contact Public Services. We can coordinate with you there. And then the public at large to look at measures to conserve on both your buildings and your grounds. So just wanted to take this opportunity to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you so much Director Ewing. And I know that other county facilities, including the Sheriff Office as well, have taken measures to do water conservation. And we'll let them elaborate a little bit near the end of the presentation on that. Just kidding, we have Sheriff Martin on the call right now. I'm going to let him hop back on if he wishes. There he goes.
I am on. Thank you Deputy Director Delagianis. A side note, Marina is a very much a pleasure to work with. She's very knowledgeable, very excited about the work she does. And I just want to take the time to thank her for putting this presentation together. I simply want to echo what was said on a previous agenda item by Director Metcalf about experiencing these droughts as well. At the Sheriff's Office, we discontinued any landscape watering that we have around our jail facility, as well as our main administrative office. It looks horrible, but I think people understand. And by setting that example and doing what we're asking other people to do, I think is probably one of the best ways that we can contribute to the effects of the drought. Happy to answer any other questions, but I just want to chime in with those, those steps that we're taking at OES.
Thank you so much Sheriff Martin. So next steps, there's a lot of information here. Again, you're going to continue to hear from this group, and we are going to make sure that we do an adequate job in providing routine updates as it relates to the drought. But I highlighted our next steps into three different sections. So we have the drought task force, which has not been forgotten. The next steps for that is, again, we are in the process of setting up reoccurring meeting schedules. As we get going with this drought task force formed by the Board of Supervisors, I would like us to meet at least on a monthly basis, ideally on a bi-weekly basis as we get things going, because we'll be bringing to the Board of Supervisors our draft charter document. With that, we are also, again, the objective of that drought task force is to prepare a drought mitigation plan. I sit on the state drought task force, and they are planning on preparing the guidebook that they have been working on for counties such as ours, who will be developing a drought mitigation plan. That guidebook, we will be having ready ideally by October, November. So that is going to provide us the guidance that we need at the local level to ensure that we are following compliance, again, with SB 552 and other ordinances in terms of the drought and water conservation measures. Now, we have highlighted a few projects that we will be working on, and some of these include the Lucerne Harbor dredging project, which I will let Director Ewing elaborate a little bit on. And then also our boat ramp extension, which I will let Director Scott DeLeon elaborate on. Again, both projects we are moving forward with. They're in different stages of the project development. Special Districts, as Scott mentioned, is working on different drinking water projects, whether it be water availability studies or extension of water intakes. And then, of course, in general, we are continuing to seek funding for water resiliency projects. I had a great conversation with friends from Community Development Department and Environmental Health to pursue other funding opportunities that are currently out there for drought mitigation, water conservation, et cetera. In general, water conservation efforts, this is where we at the county are working on prioritizing. I had a great meeting with Sheriff Martin, Lieutenant Wells, and Leah in OES. That's going to be our biggest effort moving forward. As Director Ewing mentioned, they have been doing some outreach as well, and just getting the word out there that we need to be water-wise year-round. So looking at ways that we can be creative and getting the messaging out there, providing resources and materials for folks to make sure that they are being as water-wise as possible. And again, these resources... And again, these resources are going to be on the Water Resources Lake County Drought Portal, which you can find by Googling Lake County Water Resources going on the website, and you'll see on the farther right-hand bar of the website is the drought portal. So again, here are just some additional resources, again, all on the Water Resources website. We have here on the left is the California Department of Water Resources, my dry well reporting. We have groundwater well monitoring interest form here at the county level. If you are interested in having your groundwater well monitored, you can submit this form. If you need assistance in submitting this form, just call us at Water Resources at We can do an assessment to see if we can add your well in our countywide monitoring system. We also have forms from the Rural Counties Association of Household Water Well System Loan Program. And again, the resource that I use to collect a lot of this data, which is drought.gov, they update it on a daily basis, and it just provides an accurate hub of where we can get different drought information as it relates not only to our county, but the Western U.S. in general. Before I take any questions and invite my colleagues to provide any other information that I may have missed, you can get more information as it relates to the drought by visiting the California Department of Water Resources, the California Water Boards, and then us here at the Lake County Water Resources Department. Visit us on the third floor of the courthouse. And with that being said, I'm going to invite my colleagues to elaborate on anything, and I see Director Ewing coming up.
Well, as Marina mentioned, the Lucerne Harbor dredging project, just as a brief update here, we are in the environmental studies phase, I think is a simple way to put it. There were environmental resources that were identified during the initial investigation stage, so we're extending that to what's called an extended Phase 1, and that's the status of where we are. There's, I didn't bring with me a whole lot of the depth, and to be honest, there's information there that is sensitive in nature, so it's not something that we can share to the public at large. But I've given presentations to the Lucerne Area Town Hall. Supervisor Crandall has been involved with that, so I know he's well aware of that, and we're in coordination with the tribes to do a lot of that work. They've already been involved and will continue to be involved. As far as the actual design of the project, it's not overly complicated, so the plans are essentially complete with the exception of any mitigation requirements that we may have that result from those environmental studies. But that gives you a brief update on where we are with that project.
Just a quick budgeting question. I know we budgeted for the Lucerne Harbor project. Is that funding still there, or do we, does it need to be reapproved? And is it going away slowly because of the length of time that it's taken to get to this part?
Sure. So the funding is still there, it's in a capital budget, and we still have that. What happens with a project like this, or projects, is as time goes on, obviously, the buying power of a dollar decreases, so there's certainly that issue. When we complete the environmental stage is a point where we need to say, all right, now we know what the mitigation requirements are going to be, so what is the cost of that project? Basically, do a revised cost estimate. At this point, you know, it would, it seems reasonable that the money that we have would be sufficient, in large part because if the water is low, then the dewatering that would be required of the project would be a cost savings there. So I don't have an answer for you about whether the money that we have is sufficient to fund the project, but I can tell you that the money that we have budgeted for the project is still there, and unless Susan takes it away, which wouldn't be her, but it would be the board, so it is still there, and I'm counting on that.
And I was mainly asking on all the work that's been done, it doesn't sound like that's taken away from the 250 that we set aside.
Not significantly, no, but with, as those environmental studies progress, if there's the need to continue that, then it certainly can tap into that and chip away at it. Let's just put it that way.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Scott DeLeon, Public Works Water Resources. I'll just give a brief update on the ramp extension project. I know there's a lot of interest in that. The project that we originally proposed was pretty ambitious. It included extending the ramps as well as dredging channels out into the deeper sections of the lake, and we too are kind of stuck in environmental and getting environmental and clearances and permits. We are looking at a scaled-back version of that project. Marina showed the graph of the predicted lake levels. We're a little bit below where we were last year, but not significantly. We were able to keep some ramps open, but they were challenging because they had drop-offs at the end. So we're looking at reducing the scale a little bit of this project and eliminating those drop-offs, extending them a little bit so that people can still get their boats in the water, but they're, we're probably not going, at least this year, going to be able to do the dredging that we had hoped to do, with the hopes that folks will be able to get their boats out into the deeper water and be able to use the lake.
A quick question. I know that in speaking with Sheriff Martin last year, when the water was this low, that it may not have been a daily occurrence, but it was quite often that his marine patrol had to go out to help boats that got entangled in trees, weeds, whatever else was out there. Do we have the appropriate signage to warn people? Because if we're going to have the ramp that goes even deeper than the status that we were in last year, that means there might be more boats that are attempting to get in, but also creating more potential problems.
Yeah, that signage will be a part of that. Yep, for sure. And we have ramp monitors at all of our public ramps, and they are doing a fantastic job of communicating with boaters and warning them, so we're doing that personally. Yep.
And I just wanted to, I'm trying to find it right now, but you said 250,000. I wanted to make sure, I think it was 350,000 from the last time.
I went from the top of my head, so you could be absolutely correct.
350, right?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, Lars.
I don't mean to be glib, I just, I don't recall exactly, but 350 does sound wonderful, and I honestly think it is 350.
That sounds wonderful.
No, I don't want to, yeah. So, all right.
If I don't have any other of my colleagues adding information, 3, 2, 1. All right, I will look over to the board. If you have any questions, we're happy to take those now.
I'm wondering if you can speak about what you've been hearing, I know what I've been hearing, but I think it's better coming from Water Resources about the anticipation of what to look for in the following year. I know it's not set in stone, but I keep hearing it again and again and again, and I think that we just need to be prepared and not keep wishing and hoping that something is going to change drastically.
Yes, so great question. Unfortunately, I left my crystal ball in the shop. It's still getting worked on, but we are anticipating another dry year, and that is just based off of conversations that I have with the state on a routine basis, and their studies and predictions. Again, I can't predict the future, but it's better to prepare for a dry year than to cross our fingers and hope that we get a lot of rain. So I'm always going to encourage that we just be water-wise year-round and anticipate that, again, this is not the last drought, even if we do go into another dry year, or even if we do get, you know, an awesome amount of rain, we still need to prepare for, you know, future droughts and be water-wise, be as water-wise as possible when it comes to utilizing our earth's natural resources.
And that's what I keep hearing in my state meetings as well. There's the belief that we're going to get another La Nina type of situation, very dry year, so we should anticipate to be somewhat in the same position, possibly worse, but not necessarily out of a drought situation like we've been hoping for. I know that in my area, you spoke about Clear Lake Oaks and the algae. Austin Beach, Red Bud Park is just filled to the brim with algae. It's very unfortunate. I know there's been a lot of attempts, I've been speaking with Director DeLeon over the course of many decades, to try and deal with the algae. Unfortunately, not much has come to the positive results that everyone is looking for. I am looking and researching to see if there's anything new out there. There's some stuff that could work, but also is concerning. Does it impact other issues? Because we don't want to create a problem by solving a problem. So for example, they have a sonar machine that supposedly breaks down the algae. What does that do to our ecosystem by using a sonar machine? So there's, it's not very cut and dry as to what needs to be done, but knowing that next year most likely will be a repeat, I'm not giving up to trying something different. I know the city of Clear Lake is using an air curtain. I've talked to people before who have tried an air curtain and not necessarily has worked. Granted, a typical year, we're still going to see algae, and at that point, we might see that that has positive effects. This is a pretty extreme situation that we're dealing with. I also know, and maybe Director Harder can respond to this, I know a lot of people are getting letters in their mail about conserving water from their water districts. There are some that are saying that they're in Stage 2 based on the governor's executive orders, and that potential fines or fees, additional fees will come along. And I'll just give my personal opinion to that. It's hard to conserve more when you've been conserving for the last 10 years because you've been dealing with drought again and again and again, and to ask to have a 20% reduction from where we were in 2020, I got rid of every piece of lawn that I got with my property when I purchased my property. How much more can I do to conserve? How much more can others do? When I see that, just like our last conversation, we don't see the landscaping or things like that. People are already cutting back as much as they can. So I hope that our water companies are taking a good look at who are the high utilizers of water versus just somebody who hasn't been able to reduce because they can't. So I think that overall, when we compare ourselves to other counties, especially in Southern California, we're doing a fantastic job. In fact, there is a state report that shows that Northern California has reduced yet again 15%, and yet Southern California has increased by about 5% to 7%. So I think that's one of those difficult situations that we're in, is that we're being asked to do more when we've kind of gotten used to doing that on a regular basis already. But I'm wondering if Director Harder might speak to the fact that has those types of letters gone out to special district customers, and what is expected of customers at this point?
At this point, we're still in a voluntary conservation stage for all of our water systems. We are not requiring more, as you pointed out, it's difficult to cut back more over 2020, which was a dry year already when we're seeing already significant conservation. So, yeah, there seems to be a double standard between Northern California and Southern California, but on a large scale, there's nothing we as a small water system can do about that. But, yeah, we're not seeing abuse, at least in our area. As you've noted, most of the customers in Lake County are used to living and having that conservation lifestyle. They've reduced their usage already, so cutting more on top of that is sometimes challenging. So painting with a broad brush is not our approach. We look to find if there is abuse and then deal with that on a specific basis.
Thank you.
I think it's always important to plan like it's not going to rain, and that just needs to be our standard moving forward. But I'm wondering about the creek levels and the property owners that draw from the creek, and some have riparian rights and some don't, and are there any ways to kind of educate? Like, I know in Cobb, a lot of people pull from Kelsey Creek, they don't see what happens to Kelsey Creek in Kelseyville, and so is there any messaging or anything we could do to kind of reach out to those property owners and just say, hey, just want to let you know, like, we should be reducing if possible? Because it's, you know, up at the top, you don't see the levels low, and so it doesn't compute sometime, and I'm hearing that from my constituents.
Yeah, and that's a great question, and, you know, as I focus, as I mentioned, our biggest focus moving forward is going to be this outreach and education, and a lot of that is getting this readily available data, readily available, right? And not just via electronically, but also making efforts of going out in the field, having these conversations with these, you know, parcel owners or folks that draw directly from the creeks, and giving them the resource and the information that they have to make sure that they're doing their part and that they have the information or any questions that we may be able to answer. It was actually two weeks ago, I was out in the field with the State Water Resource Control Board, and that was one of our focuses on how can we do this outreach and engagement and get these folks this information? And I know previously, in terms of our groundwater program, we've done a lot of open houses, so that's, you know, one approach that we're looking at entertaining, creating specific outreach flyers for, you know, domestic well owners or people that, you know, are able to draw from the creek or what have you not. So that's going to be one of my biggest focuses, is, you know, actually getting out in the field, you know, having these conversations face-to-face with folks, and then also giving them the information that they need. So catering our messaging, not just a generic conserve water, but how does it relate to these different communities and these folks that we have that reside in the county?
So then I have to follow up with, where can someone submit a complaint?
Yeah, so you can always give us a call at Water Resources, whether it be a complaint on water rights, illegal water hauling, dry well, you know, wells going dry, we will be able to point them in the right direction. If they still have questions after that, we can always submit that complaint as well. So I always let folks know, give us a call at Water Resources, we're your go-to in terms of, you know, our Water Resources, not necessarily drinking water and wastewater, that's our friends at Special Districts. But if you have any questions or concerns, give us a call at 707-263-2344, and we can give you that information you need and point you in the right direction.
And then those parcels that do have the riparian rights, that's easily...
Yeah, so that would be a state water board. Water board does all the water rights. Again, we're in close communications with them, so we've had folks, especially the past few months, who have given us a call, question on water rights, we're able to point them in the proper direction and even give them a contact who they can call and follow up with.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Director Wetherby to speak on, I know he had an executive order he needed to follow on denying new wells or specific types of wells. Just kind of curious how that's going, how many new wells have been drilled and permitted? Just to kind of see what the situation is that he's dealing with from that perspective? If he's available.
I don't see if he's on, let me see. I see his hand up, he just needs to be unmuted.
Sorry about that, I was just waiting for access granting. So yes, we did have the executive order that came through, and we do have that sorted out now. For folks who are doing repairs on existing wells, that should not be a concern at all, especially dry wells, if you want to go deeper, we can now get that, get those permits turned around fairly quickly. For new wells, domestic use only, for residents, businesses that use water incidentally to their operations, those wells can be drilled with just a statement of fact that the well is going to be used for such domestic purposes. Ag wells do, ag and industrial wells do have a little bit more of a burden, a hill to climb for them. They will have to have that engineering report stating that their wells will not cause a subsidence or are likely to interfere with the well of a neighboring property. So, but we are moving forward with wells, we are issuing well permits, and there is no stoppage of well permits in Lake County at this time. A little confusion on that amongst some folks.
And are you seeing an increase in permits or decrease in permits?
Probably a slight decrease in permits. Over last year, we have seen fewer ag wells being applied for, but domestic wells soon to be holding steady.
Okay. And then my last question for you is, when you kind of closed the door on something that was allowed yesterday, people tend to still want to do it. Are you getting complaints of illegal well drilling?
Actually, no, we really haven't received many complaints of illegal well drilling. It seems like, actually, there's been a pretty small downtick in wells as related to certain products, just because the market has started a little bit. So they're just not building as many wells right now.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open it up to, unless you have anything else to add, or?
No.
Open it up to public comments. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on this item on the agenda? 7.2, sorry, no, 6.6. No, and so I see on Zoom we have Betsy Khan. Betsy, I see your hands up. If you'd like to unmute, state your name for the record, and we'll start your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Betsy Khan, the Essential Public Information Center. I have three or four comments that are related to different parts of the presentation. The first one has to do with the statement in Mr. Harder's report about the drought and drinking water systems, specifically in regard to the North Lakeport water system near CSA 20, I believe, it was 2020. near CSA 20, I believe, or 21. I wonder if you're aware of the exploratory wells that were drilled by Waterworks Engineering in 2007 regarding the expansion of that particular plant for a large number of proposed developments in that area? Because that was a really very conflicting report, and there were subsequent attempts to, you know, connect that up to the Upper Lake County Water District and, you know, so there's some really serious issues around that expansion, if that's what is happening. The second comment I have is about the museum greens, the beautiful, huge trees there, the heritage trees. Because there is irrigation done there, maybe some signage explaining why that is provided, and it's an extraordinary use of the water for that lawn, maybe that would be helpful because that's a really important place to continue irrigating. The third one is, in the discussion about all of these conservation efforts, as in examples were the next steps presented by Ms. Delgianis, not one mentioned fire suppression flows or prioritizing the expansion of storage facilities or maintaining certain critical levels of supplies in relation to the measurement of available water. I'm really concerned about that, and I think the Risk Reduction Authority ought to be concerned about that. The last one has to do with the Lucerne Harbor. Really did not understand what Mr. Ewing was saying about the, who's doing the EIR, the environmental report, where it is, and what is it going to take to expedite that while we do have these low level, low lake level conditions conducive to actually expediting that project? So if there's any way I can get that information, that would be great. But thank you for this. There are some, those are my concerns. Thank you.
All right. I don't see anyone else on Zoom with their hand up. Didn't know if, did you want to just reach out to them, Lars, or did you want to just answer?
Sure, I can respond to two of those. The trees, I think that's a very good point. Oftentimes, you see greenery on the ground, the lawn, but the trees are really the need for that. One example, at Lucerne Harbor, there's a, some redwood groves, or a redwood grove that's there, that the community has really pointed out that, you know, those trees are brown. Well, those are coastal redwoods. It's, they're not in a coastal region, and so it's very common that those trees have that. I'm not speaking from my expertise, which is minimal. I'm speaking from the arborist that we've hired to assess those trees. For those trees specifically, we're taking some extra steps because the water that we draw from the lake is now, that pump, the intake is out of the lake now, and so we're bringing in a tank specifically to water those trees, actually in coordination with Cal Water, who will be providing the water for that tank. So that was, that just happened this morning. So that's information that may be new to include the supervisor there. I think he might have known that that was in the works. But I bring that up because, yes, those trees, those trees in particular, they were planted as a POW and MIA memorial, and so we want to make sure that certain trees get certain attention. Coming back to Lucerne Harbor dredging, Betsy, I think maybe if we have a conversation, I could clear that up. We're not at an EIR stage. We're doing the studies necessary to complete an initial study. We have an archaeologist who is doing the necessary cultural and historical artifact research at this point. So, Betsy, I'll contact you later, Chair, if that's okay.
Yes, thank you, Lars. Thank you very much. I see Scott Harder, if you'd like to unmute and?
Sure, thank you, Chair. Yes, to address Betsy's question or concerns about the North Lakeport, previous 2007 studies that were done, we do have those, we're aware of those. The developments, I believe, were Robin Hill, and then there was another one on the west side of the highway out of North Lakeport there. So we're not looking in those areas, so we're certainly not looking to replicate or duplicate the controversy that was around those projects.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other hands up for Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board. Oh, actually, I do. Joan, if you'd like to come up and state your name for the record before you get into your question, we'll give you three minutes.
I do have a question. I want to know if, when the monitoring is being done by the county, are you communicating with the EPA who is in charge of the toxic waste site at Sulfur Bank? And is there a connection? I've read on the internet that there is a connection between cyanobacteria and methyl mercury. I want to know if you test for methyl mercury or if the federal government has been testing, as they said in their last public hearing, on the, with the USGS researching methyl mercury. I believe it's connected with cyanobacteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you?
So just to answer a few of those questions, Joan, so in terms of our monitoring, just to be specific, for our groundwater monitoring that we do at the County of Water Resources, we have biannual well runs. We go in the spring and fall, where we monitor all the groundwater wells that we have around the county, and we coordinate very closely with the California Department of Water Resources, who also does biannual well monitoring for our groundwater basins. Now for our SIGMA, our Sustainable Groundwater Management Act Priority Basin, we do monthly groundwater monitoring, which we go out once a month, usually early in the month, where we do groundwater monitoring. All this data is readily available. You can find a lot of this data on the California Department of Water Resources portal or contact us at Water Resources Lake County to get that information. Now, the Superfund Site, again, that is coordinated by the EPA. We have brought them previously to do a presentation a few months ago on the update of the Superfund Site, and I know there's interest on their end to provide another update. So that's something that I'm more than happy to work with, to sponsor, to bring that update and then provide hopefully more guidance for Mrs. Moss on her questions regarding that.
There'll also be another update at the East Region Town Hall on September 6th or 8th, I think, on the Wednesday for their next meeting, so. Yeah, okay. I don't see any other hands up, so I will bring this back to the board. Any other questions or comments before we wrap this up? Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on something that Ms. Khan brought up, and that's the addition of storage. And I know that our water districts have been attempting to do so, just like we were talking about earlier, and we approved, was that last week or two weeks ago, for the addition of a well in the North Lakeport area. Everyone is trying to figure out what to do. I know that's why Lakeport has its well and not just getting it from the lake, is to have that extra support, the redundancy that Director Harder was talking about. But the one thing that I can think of is, it's difficult to create new storage just in the state of California, let alone in the County of Lake, where even though it's a creek that goes into the lake, you still have to go through the layers of Yolo County flood control. And so that makes it that much more difficult. In my opinion, the Middle Creek Restoration Project is a storage project that would add thousands of acre feet of water, which is, again, why that project is so important. It's water quality, it's flood control, and it's extra water storage added to our lake to bring back those historical flows. So I just wanted to bring that, kind of cover that topic since she brought it up, and it's a great comment. We need more storage, but getting storage around in our creek beds and stuff like that is, you're not going to be able to create the storage that we need. I do know that there was conversation with, that was brought to this board because of the drought a year or two ago with Director Weatherby, that right now, we do not have any setbacks from creeks when digging a well. And I know that that led to more conversation where some properties might be restricted, and so we don't want to do that. But at the same time, some people are drawing pretty much directly from a creek, even though they're not drawing with a pipe in the creek. And some of those things could be changed here at the board level. I don't know if Mr. Weatherby wanted to add on to that or not, but those are my comments on ways to try and add more water into the lake and trying to add more storage to the water that we have.
And then just to elaborate, thank you for that background, Supervisor Sabatier. You know, we at the local level here at Water Resources, we are, you know, pursuing projects. If folks are familiar with our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan, specifically in our Big Valley Basin, we do have identified priority projects focused on water storage and water availability. One example is, you know, our detention structure that we have on Kelsey Creek that helps with groundwater storage. And another proposed project that has been historically, you know, tried to move forward, but from different obstacles, other refunding, environmental compliance, et cetera, is the Adobe Conjunctive Use Project that we are still interested in pursuing. So not only do we have those priority projects, for example, in our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan, those are projects that when I say that we are seeking funding, that we are trying to seek funding and support for. I know we've also tried to pursue funding through the Western Region IRWM, which is another group we participate in at the county level that we've tried to bring those projects forward, and more than happy, and I'm looking forward to collaborate with the Risk Reduction Authority to get a broader scope of potential storage projects that we are looking at pursuing. But of course, funding, as always, is a big roadblock, so.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and close up, and thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the other directors coming in and giving us the insight and input as well. It's very helpful as we navigate along this timeframe of the drought, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so let's see here. With that, we will move on to these non-timed items. It looks like we'll go to 7.2. Consideration of request to appoint negotiating team for the purchase of the Kelseyville Event Center, a property located at 5245 Third Street, Kelseyville, California, APN 02508306. Let's see. And I'll give this to CAO Parker.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We bring this item forward for your board's consideration today. The American Rescue Plan Act Committee has recommended exploring the option to purchase and renovate the Kelseyville Senior Center. As such, staff requests that your board appoint a negotiating team that consists of myself and ACAO Stephen Carter. We will discuss terms and expectations later today in closed session.
All right. Did, any questions?
No, I'm just excited, we've had this discussion before about the ARPA funds, and I'm excited that this is moving forward, and I think this is the great next step.
Did you have anything, Ms. Grant? Okay. All right, so I'll open it up for the public. See a hand up, let's see. Betsy Khan, if you'd like to unmute, state your name for the record, and we'll start your three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Betsy Khan, the Essential Public Information Center. I would like to understand what the purpose of this purchase is. Has there been some request made from the Senior Center Board? Is it an, has the Area Agency on Aging recommended this? What's the deal?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we've had this discussion at the board here before. We've had the discussion with, I've had the discussion with the Area on Aging, and I have spoken with the Kelseyville Senior Center about it. The issue is that it's an aging building, and it's difficult for them to manage the repairs and the maintenance. And because the Senior Center only uses the building in the first half of the day, it opens up opportunities for the community to use it as a community center the second half of the day. And that's, you know, that community does not have a community center, nor does it have a library within the district. District 5 does not have a library, so that's another option that we've discussed, is having an outpost library. But now we also have a bookmobile van coming, so there are a lot of parts, but there is a need for this community, and that's why I've brought this before the ARPA Committee and then came before the board last winter, too.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the public? Okay, I see another hand. Elizabeth Larson, Lake County, news, if you'd like to unmute, and we'll go ahead and start I'm not hearing, I'm not sure if you're unmuted. You're back on mute, if you, there you go. It's not coming in for some reason.
Is it possible to submit it as a chat? Looks like she's connecting.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just had a quick question about, so who, if this purchase went forward, who would operate the center? Is this going to be operated by the Kelseyville Seniors or is it going to be operated by the county?
It's going to be operated by the county, but the building will be leased by the Senior Center.
So it will, and will they continue their operations there under that lease?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing any other hands up for public comment, so I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
I did get a question yesterday, and I believe I know the answer, but I'll just go ahead and ask and make sure to clarify. The current owners of that building is that Senior Center nonprofit?
Yes, but I'll let CAO Parker explain.
I won't go into great detail.
The due diligence that she's been performing over the last six months.
It currently on the deed, it's Kelseyville Senior, Inc., so yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So with that, there's not any other discussion. I guess we would appoint a negotiating team, so.
As proposed.
So moved.
Second?
I see a hand up again. I did close public comment, but I'll go ahead and open it briefly before we do the second. Elizabeth, if you'll unmute, please.
I apologize, I forgot to ask one thing. Is there an estimated cost of what it would, for the county to operate the building on an annual basis?
Not at this time.
All right. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment, and Joan, if you please come forward and state your name for the record, and we'll go from there.
Joan Moss, I was wondering if the Lucerne Center and the Upper Lake Center and the Clear Lake Center for senior citizens, are they also properties of Lake County or are they properties of the seniors? Thank you.
So, yeah, they're different. I know, did you want to?
Yeah, I can't speak to the ownership of those properties. I think they're owned privately, they're not owned by the county.
No, I know that Lucerne rents like a specific amount with the county.
Oh, here he is.
That might be beneficial to state. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. So Lucerne is not a county-owned, if we're talking the Lucerne Senior Center, that is not a county-owned building.
But it's the, there's the one building on the side, the thrift shop.
The thrift shop is, we leased that to them. Let's see, Clear Lake Oaks is a county-owned building, which is leased to the Senior Center, and was there one more?
Upper Lake.
Upper Lake, I will have to research. I believe that is not a county-owned building.
And for Clear Lake, it's owned by the city of Clear Lake and leased to the nonprofit that runs the Senior Center stuff.
Thank you, Lars.
So I'll just go back to our original discussion with the ARPA funds. This is an investment that we want to make in our senior centers and into our seniors, so we're taking, I believe we designated a million dollars to upgrade the senior centers or to assess them and set them up for success. The Kelseyville Senior Center has a lot of deferred maintenance that they were struggling to do, and this was a way that we could invest in that facility and kind of ease that burden and let them, and let them have the ability to do what they need to do to function for the seniors and kind of remove that burden.
All right, thank you. So, Betsy, if you can make this, I mean, your last one, you see your hands up again, so if we can keep it brief and ask your last question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't intend to waste your time.
You're not, I just.
The Upper Lake Senior Center is a building that belongs to the county and leased to the to the Senior Support Services of Upper Lake. Uh, it used to be the original county courthouse on Mendenhall Avenue. And the Lucerne Senior Center, uh, is privately owned by the, um, nonprofit corporation with the exception of a, a mortgage held by the County of Lake, um, uh, administration. That is a very complicated matter. I can explain it in detail to anybody who wants to know, so.
Thank you for that information. It was very helpful. With that, I'll close, uh, public input and, uh, get back to the second of the motion that was made.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right. Next, we will go on to item 7.3. Consideration of Agreement between County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises Incorporated for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services for Fiscal Year 22, '23 in the amount of $130,000, and authorize the board chair to sign. And we have Director Matt Caff here, uh, for this item.
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
Is this on?
Yes, I think it is.
Oh, there we go, okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, I would like to speak to this item. Um, Vista Pacifica is a facility we have worked with for, for many years. Um, and, uh, Chair Crandall, as you pointed out, they do provide, uh, specialty mental health and adult residential services, uh, to our clients. These services are mandated by the state's, uh, mental health plan, and as you know, um, we have no such facility like this here in the county. And this pretty much necessitates the need for us to, to contract for these services in order to meet the needs of our clients and satisfy the state's mandate. Last fiscal year, we, we placed three clients, um, in this facility for a total of 136 bed days. Um, I believe Elise Jones, our administrative deputy director, may be, um, tuned into this meeting. She might be able to add a little bit more to this, but, um, I, I'm hoping, I'm hoping she's here. Oh, there she is. Hi, Elise.
Good morning. Thank you. Nothing more to add aside from the fact that we did go out to bid, just to reiterate the fact that we did go out to bid for this and many other levels of service, from secure locked facilities to board and cares, that continuum of residential care. And Vista Pacifica did not submit a proposal, and that is why it is only a one-year agreement.
Thank you. Todd, did you have anything else to add, or?
But, but, nothing else to add. Um, just, I'm hoping that we can get this agreement approved in order to, um, provide a continuum of care to our, to our clients, because, you know, these, as you know, these facilities are hard to come by, and we have a, a very good working relationship with Vista Pacifica, and would like to continue that, um, in case we need to, to use their facility.
Any, uh, questions from the board?
I do have a question for you, and, and just let you know, I'm gonna be asking this for all upcoming contracts. When's the last time that we had a, uh, request for records, documentation pertaining to the agreement, including financial, statistical, property, recipient, and service records? Uh, it says here for up to a period of five years. I'm just curious as to when's the last time we requested that from this agency, because we've been doing work with them for a long time. This board has not received any specific reports. Um, and it's not that I, I have any concerns with the contractor. What I'm concerned is we're spending $5 million a year on contracts in 2019, and now we're spending close to $10 million a year on contracts. And I, I just want to make sure as we're seeing that balloon and increase, and it's gonna continue to increase, that we are getting exactly what we want to get in return for the cost of these services. And those services are getting more and more expensive. This one went from around $90,000 to now it's $130,000 total per year, uh, for half a year's worth of, uh, services, because we're holding beds and, and, um, not having people there all the time, which I understand. Uh, but I, I, I want to feel more comfortable, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'm guessing the answer is we probably haven't gotten one of those specific reports in the last five years, and wondering if that's something that the board would like to, uh, request. I would like to request. It's part of the contract, uh, and it says shall, it doesn't say may, uh, and it's just to be more transparent with the way the funds are used and the services that are, uh, provided to ensure that, yes, this is the exact type of contract we want to continue moving forward with. I'm willing to move forward today, but I'd like to mix in a request for when they're done with their fiscal year, uh, reporting for '21, '22, that they go ahead and provide us, uh, the five years' worth of reporting or whatever years, uh, of reporting. So that, that's something that I'm gonna ask, because I, I really want us to be as transparent and to really understand what we're paying for and what we're getting out of these contracts. Uh, I think it will help not just us with the approval process, but I think it will help the, uh, your team and yourself to really understand who's, uh, where are the greatest benefits and all the spectrum of contractors that we have. Uh, so just curious if you have an answer of when the last time we made a request for that, uh, and then asking the board if that's something the board would like to request.
Off the top of my head, I cannot recall, and Elise, I don't know if you, if you know.
I do know.
I figured she would.
So we require all facilities with whom we contract to submit an annual cost report, and we can provide that information moving forward in these items with facilities with whom we re-contract. We can provide that cost report information. Certainly, um, cost reporting is something, we also settle up with the state every year in a grand cost report. Also, that's the fiscal aspect, so yes, we do get those annually. Um, the clinical or more outcome-focused aspect is that we do monitor all clients placed at any of these facilities extensively through our discharge planning team. We're in contact, many of these folks are on, uh, a type of conservatorship when they're placed at these facilities. Um, and so our discharge planning team works closely, often with the public guardian, to support individuals on, on any type of conservatorship at these facilities, including, uh, thorough review of treatment records by a licensed practitioner of the healing arts to approve payment of those services. We do not approve payment of services where we do not see, um, clinical necessity has been met or that the services are not justifiable. And so those are monitored, um, very closely by our team.
I, I appreciate that you are getting some of that information. I also appreciate we're getting it verbally. Uh, if we can, again, up to the board, not me, I don't want to make a personal request, but if we can implement that in, here's the new contract, here's the previous data that you've collected, to me, that creates relevancy as to we're seeing good work, we're seeing good outcomes, this is the utilization that we have, uh, and good stewards of the tax dollars that we're giving. Um, and I think that would be a, a great addition, since you're already, seems like you're already getting that, just combining it all together.
Absolutely, and, um, as Elise mentioned, I mean, you know, a, a lot of these have to do with our folks that are, uh, conserved, and we do work very closely with the Public Guardian's office, and, um, in concert with them, uh, we could probably, uh, glean a little more information from them and provide you, um, even more comprehensive information, um, around this. So, yes, we will, we will certainly do that.
Thank you. Well, again, if the board agrees.
I'm agreeance with it, yeah. Um, and so, uh, you're.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, thank you. And so what I'll do is open it up to public input briefly, uh, to ensure if there's any questions. Not seeing any in the chambers or on Zoom. I will bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the consideration of agreement between the County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises, Inc. for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services for Fiscal Year 22, '23 in the amount of $130,000, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second? So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to 7.4. Consideration of Agreement between County of Lake and Women's Recovery Services for Substance Abuse or Substance Use Disorder Residential Treatment Services for FY 2022, '23 in the amount of $105,850, and authorize the board chair to sign. And Director Matt Caff, this one's yours as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, as, uh, Chair Crandall mentioned, uh, this is an agreement with Women's Recovery Services. Um, this is coming before you because this is a result, um, of a request for proposals that, that we sent out a while back, um, for them to provide, um, substance use disorder diagnoses to pregnant and postpartum women. The state, as I, as in the last, um, item, the state requires us to provide these services, and as you've heard me say, um, due to our limited staffing, um, issues, uh, we must contract out, uh, for these, for these services. I'm hoping that our Substance Use, uh, Disorder Services Program Manager, April Gambra, will be here, um, with us, because she, uh, provided me a lot of statistics that she might want to share, and of course, she's here as well. Um, April, um, I will turn it over to you if, if, if you're ready.
Yes.
And, thank you very much. Um, hello?
Yes, we hear you.
I'm from Florida.
Yep.
I am the Lieutenant of Behavioral Health and Recovery Program Manager, um, and I just want to appreciate the quest for transparency and being there. Uh, moving forward, we will definitely have this presented with our, um, moving forward with the contract, but if it's okay with the board, I would like to present some statistics now. Um, so, hmm, the fiscal year 21, '22, uh, we did contract with, uh, WRS, Women's Recovery Services, for the same contract amount with the service, two beds, um, for the rate of $1.45 per day. Um, we also, just to kind of back up for a second, we also perform onsite reviews, uh, discharge reviews. Uh, we, we recently, um, took a member of our fiscal compliance, uh, clinical and administrative team, we did a walkthrough of the facility. We actually thought this to be an experience and review in great detail, um, some of that information, and I have that today to provide your belief that, as noted, moving forward, we will definitely do so in the report. Um, so the contract amount did not come. Uh, we do have, uh, the rate of $1.45 with, uh, $334, um, let's see, it was, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I just correct. It is $272 less than all other, uh, day rate beds that we received. Uh, so the financial cost element is definitely there. Um, we have currently, uh, for the fiscal year 21, '22, we referred eight women. Two of them are still currently in services. Um, two did no show, however, we have a 2.5% success rate, as, uh, we had three women complete successfully. Um, we still have the same amount of beds moving forward, and we do have those beds currently filled. Uh, so I'm pretty confident that our utilization rate will remain the same, if not, will be greater. Um, I did want to add that we did not have the women on the waitlist. We were able to accommodate, uh, with no wait times. Um, I will go on to say that in reviewing the facility, one of the things that victims, that we found to be special, in that no other providers were providing this, but the floor size, uh, for the children that were there, um, they had their own playground, women had their own apartment, uh, the place was absolutely beautifully landscaped. It was very warming, warm and welcoming, um, it was secured. I, I am very impressed with Women's Recovery Services, and grateful to push this forward, um, for our county. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Um, I, I was seeing the, um, the document that was attached, uh, from Women's Recovery Services, and I appreciated the, uh, the direct outcomes. I didn't know and couldn't really hear, uh, very well, but, uh, if that, if those numbers pertain to Lake County citizens or just in general for the Women's Recovery Services.
That would be specific to Lake County, but April, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that those, those figures were, were representative of our, our county.
Excellent. I appreciate seeing that i- in there. That helps me, you know, to understand what, where, where the dollars are going. Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I just have to say, uh, I'm, I'm overwhelmed with happiness with this report, um, knowing that we're reviewing the facilities, us knowing what's in the facilities. Um, I, I just think that's the level of information I've been looking for, and I, I want to say you hit the bar. Uh, and I just want to say that I absolutely appreciated the statistics, the understanding of where we're sending people. I was gonna ask you if we had anybody on the waitlist, and you already mentioned that. Uh, I just have to say thank you, uh, because I know that on the other side, I, I scrutinize and look for those details, but I want to say I appreciate it, and I'm, uh, ready to move forward with this. And a quick question. Uh, I, you said that it was $272 less than the other bid. I believe we got five bids for this, and I, I just have to highlight that. I think that right there, it, I know some RFPs, you kind of probably roll your eyes, we didn't get any, or we got one, but others, when we're getting five, that is the absolute purpose of the RFP, and here we were able to find not just a lower cost, but also a facility that offers something that we don't find in other facilities. So I, this is, this is exactly what I was looking for, so thank you.
Sorry it's taking me so long, Supervisor Sabatier, but we're, we're getting there.
You're there.
So, if there's not any other comments, I'll open it up for public input. All right, and I don't see any online, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between County of Lake and Women's Recovery Services for Substance Use Disorder Residential Treatment Services for FY 22, '23 in the amount of $105,850, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second? So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and motion carries. All right, and so, let's see how many we have. Two, okay, so power through these, we're good? All right, so.
I'm going as fast as I can.
My fault.
7.5. Consideration of Amendment Number One to the Agreement between County of Lake and Paragons LLC for Consultant Services to the Lake County Continuum of Care on behalf of Lake County Behavioral Health for Fiscal Year 20, '21 and '22, increasing the contract maximum to $30,723, and authorize the chair to sign. And with that, Todd, this one's yours as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is an amendment to the existing agreement we have with, with, with Paragons, um, to cover an overage of, of the original, uh, contract total. Um, I, I have to say that, that Paragons has been an amazing resource for us, um, us, uh, not only Lake County Behavioral Services, but Lake County in general, because they have helped us, um, with grant writing and, and bringing thousands, tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, into the county, uh, in particular around, um, housing and homelessness. They're, they're really focused on the activities, uh, around the housing continuum of care. Um, this past fiscal year, uh, there were numerous, uh, grant opportunities, more so than in the past, and, um, you know, we went after as many of those as we could and have been awarded. Uh, you, you, your board has approved, um, many of those. Um, and that's what led to the contract overage, because in the 11th hour, there was, there were some other things we had asked them to do, other grants to go after. Um, and so that's why I'm bringing this to the board to approve, um, the dollar amount, um, that went over. Uh, we've just sort of recycled the same dollar amount over the years for the contract, because that's pretty much where it had been. But this last year, we just saw an unprecedented amount of grant opportunities that we felt, uh, were appropriate to go after, and, uh, Paragons has been very instrumental in helping us, um, write those grants and secure those funds. Um, I'm not sure, oh, I see him there already. Scott Abbott, our Mental Health Services Act and Housing Program Manager, might be able to provide, uh, a few more details, but, but that's the reason we're bringing this amendment to the board. And, and I also want to add that, um, these are for services that have already been rendered in the prior fiscal year. And Scott, uh, did, did I miss anything?
No, you did really great. Um, you, you, usually, you know, we've, we've, we've worked with Paragons for a number of years now, and this is the first time that they've gone over, and, and it's just like you said, Todd, it was, it was due to, um, some extra, extra grant opportunities which, which we applied for. And a whole, a whole bunch of them were in June. For some reason, we had four of them due at the end of June, so that's where it really hit us.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, so I do have, uh, some questions on this one. Uh, one is the, it's, I get it when it's a patient, you can't have an, you can't expect the unexpected, and so I get it if there's an overage, like for the next item, there's an overage, we're asking to pay for the patients that maybe we didn't even know were there until we got the bill. the bill or the invoice, but here, this is a request for somebody to provide a service, and it's mostly office work and things like that, and so, I'm not sure, what mechanisms do you have in place so that when you're close to going over, that you can request for going over? Because I'll just be blunt, I'm not a fan of feeling like I have to rubber stamp something because it's already done, and I kind of feel like my hand is being forced, and what's the purpose of approving things if we can just go over and then ask for that to be corrected? And it's happened multiple times over the course of the years, and so, what are the mechanisms in place so that when you get close, you don't have to meet the $25,000 mark? You could be at $20,000 and still ask for an increase so that you make sure that you're within your margins? What mechanisms are in place so that this is reduced the number of times that we do see past contracts be amended to meet the actual cost and total expenses?
We do have regular meetings where we review all of our contracts and tracking the spend down of those contracts, but as Scott mentioned, and I as well, there was a last-minute scramble in the last month of this, of last fiscal year, in June, where, once we were invoiced, we realized that it had gone over, and Scott and Elise, if you're still here, I believe that's what happened in this particular situation.
Right. It was, we certainly were kind of like hit with four different grants that were due at the end of June, and there were, two were already been worked on. One was one we discovered kind of last minute, and then another one was a request for the PLHA grant that we used for Collier Avenue, that RCHDC said they needed to have that, as a tax credit by the end of the month, and so, we had to, we had to really scramble to get those done. And like I said, usually, this is, it's never been an issue previously.
I almost want to ask, why is RCHDC paying for this if they told us at the last minute, but yet taxpayers are flipping that bill? Just...
It benefits the county, so that's, you know, to be able to build the Collier Avenue apartments, and that's why we did that.
And I guess my next question is, what mechanisms do our contractors have to not go over because they just expect us to pay if they go over the contract amount? I don't know. I'm struggling with this one, with, it's not patient-related, it's office work-related, and there needs to be a point where there's a timeout, because now we're breaching the contract and breaching the agreement. I get it that we want to do these grants, but grants don't just appear and disappear within a matter of days. It does take time for grants to be flown and applications to be filled out and submitted, and to me, this would have been timely enough that we could have been able to do this prior rather than after, where again, I feel like my hand is being forced. My second part, and I'm going to ask Ms. Grant, County Counsel, to, I know I was having a conversation with her earlier today about this as well. I know this is an amendment, and I feel like it's a little bit of a loophole in our purchasing ordinance where there was a contract for less than $25,000, so it never came to the board, and now it's coming back to us above $25,000, which typically would trigger a waiving of the bidding or an RFP, but yet, there's no waiving of the bidding here, and there's no RFP, and so, are we able to proceed? Are we not able to proceed? Is it a loophole that we can't do anything for at this moment in time?
Normally, if what you had was a contract and you wanted to expand services to a considerable degree, and it came to you before the services had been performed, your board could determine to put something out to an RFP and just begin a whole new contract. You don't have to do that because a contract, as long as it's timely and within the confines of the existing terms and conditions of the four corners of the document, you're entitled to amend it if you choose to do so, so it doesn't automatically trigger. But again, if you had a contract for a particular service and there was an amendment to expand it either the scope of the service greatly or to a new service, and it was before the fact, your board could say, well, let's put that part out to bid, this is bigger and more than was contemplated before. Here, however, the department has explained to you that they've already incurred the costs, so it's a moot point, quite frankly.
And I do just want to point out, and Supervisor Sabatier, you've said that this is office work. It's very important work that they are doing for us, because we don't, I don't, I have a little grants committee, but I don't have a grant writer. I don't know if any other county departments have such a luxury, and so, as I mentioned earlier, Paragon's has done amazing work for us and the county in helping us secure funds to, you know, create more, you know, housing opportunities for our folks, and not just behavioral health clients, but the county in general, and so, this $5,000 and change, or almost $6,000, I think is a, is kind of a small price to pay for, it's a good return on our investment, in my opinion, but Supervisor Sabatier, I respect what, I get what you're saying, but this amendment to this contract, again, is for services rendered, but I think it's a small price to pay considering what this organization has brought to our community.
And I'll respond to that. I get it that it's a small amount, but I know last year, we did something like $845,000 worth of later pay. We even had to borrow from the reserves and things like that, so that, I just want to make sure that there's mechanisms in place to stay within the allocated amounts that are budgeted, and the allocated amounts for each of the, I get it, it's a lot of contracts, you got to keep track of that, but I think it's important to do so, because I think it's also important work to ensure that tax dollars go to the places that we say where they go, rather than kind of be forced to put them where they're needed to go, so, yeah, those are my comments.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that.
I see Elise has her hand up.
Thank you. To address the issue around the competitive bidding process, it would have been a timeline crunch that would have been prohibitive to our being able to apply for those grants if we paused at the contract maximum and said, okay, we went past, we're at that, and so now, we need to go out to bid for grant writing services. We would have had to issue an RFP that takes about a month to get through. The contracting process itself takes about a month from start to board approval, and that was not, that's not the timeline that we had for these, unfortunately, so I understand totally the perception here that we are essentially asking forgiveness and not permission, and yet, I do hope that the good of what this will do for our community outweighs that asking of forgiveness, so that's my, that's my three cents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think, for me, just, I would like to see the work that was done, what grants they were for, how the grants ended up working with, or actually furthering the assistance for our county, you said, housing. I'd like to see who was served, you know, and things like that, so I'd like just a couple more reports to add to that, just to see, so that when you do come forward and say, hey, we need to add a couple more dollars, because, oh, they're doing, they are doing work, I'm not just hearing you say that, you know, that would help me.
And, Mr. Chair, we are, we are in the process of putting together a presentation to your board around all the funding that we have received for housing and homelessness, so, stay tuned.
Any other comments?
It's just to be transparent, my big kind of issue right now in my mind is the comment about the RH, RCHDC, asking at the last second and it costing us more without them contributing, that's my only issue. We need to be a partner in this, not using the county, because they're benefiting from this program as well, so, that's my only part, I just don't know what...
One thing also to, I think, keep in mind is the funds that we use to pay for Paragon's come from administrative grant funds, so, it's the money that we bring into the county, we use a portion of that, it goes back to pay for these grant writing services.
And I understand that, I just, if it's grant dollars, but we also have to report how the grant dollars were spent in return as well, and other, in all aspects, not just how it's given to the contractor, it's also how it was spent otherwise, so I just, that's what it helps for me, but I, thank you for specifying that, Scott. Did you have anything else, Supervisor Sabatier? Any other comments? So, I'll open it up to the public, let's see, I don't see any hands up, and I don't see anyone in the chambers, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement between County of Health, County of Lake and Paragon's LLC for Consultant Services to the Lake County Continuum of Care on behalf of Lake County Behavioral Health for Fiscal Year 202122, increasing the contract maximum to $30,723, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second. So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Hold on one second, just, aye for the in favor. Apologize, I was still stuck thinking.
Sorry, I moved too quickly. Maybe I should, maybe Johanna would love for me to ask for roll call votes again.
Until it's time for lunch.
All right, so, with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is 7.6, and that is consideration of purchase order for Adventist Health, Adventist St. Helena and Vallejo Hospital for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services in the amount of $69,103 for Fiscal Year 202122, and authorize Lake County Behavioral Health Services Department head to sign the purchase order, and this is yours, Todd.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I do need to point out, there is an error, and I apologize, there's an error in the board memo, that this is for services that were provided and rendered in Fiscal Year 2021, not 2122, as the board memo states, and the reason why, we have had extreme difficulty in contacting and getting a hold of Adventist Health, they have not responded to our multiple requests to amend the existing contract, so, it was suggested by our Auditor Controller's Office that we do a purchase order for these services that have already been rendered so that we can get billed and move on. I do want to mention, though, just for your information, the last fiscal year, we placed 67 clients at both of the Adventist Health facilities for a total of 641 bed days, and those 67 clients do represent an unduplicated number, but I again want to iterate the fact that we have been very diligent in trying to work with this organization to get them to respond to our requests, to facilitate a contract amendment to no avail, and I think Christine Andrus, our fiscal manager, and Elise Jones, our administrative deputy director, might still be here, and they might be able to share a little bit more around that, but that's the reason why we had to do it, or having to do it this way, because of the nonresponsiveness of Adventist Health.
Did you want to add, Elise?
I can. Yeah, we did already, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. We did already actually bring to the board, I believe it was at least one other purchase order for approval for acute psychiatric inpatient hospital services, I think that was for a facility called Heritage Oaks, and unfortunately, a lot of hospitals are not very responsive in the contracting process, and so, oh, here's Christine as well, but that's also, as you know, we're required to pay these bills regardless. We're on the hook, and Supervisor Sabatier, as you so aptly noted, yes, sometimes we don't even know that we have had clients placed there for a variety of different reasons, and I will let Chrissy say more, if she has more to say.
I think you've covered it, Elise. I don't have much more to say to that.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
So, this is 2021 fiscal year?
Yes.
And we're using 2223 funds to pay for that? I guess I'm asking an auditor controller question, that do we need to move funds from one fiscal year to the next to pay for it, or can we use the 2223 for this? Because I know we've gone backwards before...
We have.
...because of some things like that, that's why I'm asking the question.
And Chrissy, our fiscal, she's probably the expert on where this money will be coming from, or has already come from.
So, these are normally billable services up to the state, but because Adventist Health took so long in not responding to our contract, these are now services that will have to be captured on our cost report and reimbursed to us through that. These will come out of this fiscal year's budget, because we were unable to get that contract last fiscal year, and with the fiscal year being closed, they'll have to come out of this fiscal year.
Chrissy, I'd also like to acknowledge what happened last fiscal year with our department. I'm sure that is on the board's mind, and it is not what we anticipate happening this year. This, and I think one more contract amendment, we're not at the, paying for past year's services, we're not going to have to do that whole dance again, but one more contract amendment for another inpatient facility, just to adjust a significant, insignificant amount, not very, not very large, and this is the last of it. We are not going to have an influx of contracts in this fiscal year, paying for last fiscal year services because of challenges related to invoicing, so I just want to provide that assurance.
My last question is, when did we receive these invoices the first time? Have we been working for like the past year and a half trying to get this amendment going? Like, when was the original invoice, or was that very late as well?
No, this has been an ongoing issue, and Elise, you've been more into me involved in this than I have, but this has gone on for quite some time.
These are invoices that we did receive in 2122 fiscal year, and we tried to amend the 2021 contract, and that's where we had a difficult time getting that contract admitted through to them and for them to sign, so, they just, we have, we receive invoices up to six months after a stay for a client at Adventist Health. That's just their billing process, and so, these are invoices that we did receive last fiscal year for the previous fiscal year.
Yes, and just one more thing to that, that's, I have been trying to establish a contract with Adventist Health for those hospital services since the beginning of the year, and I can provide all the documentation, I actually most recently sent them a certified letter to attempt to get them to respond, to review and sign the contract, to which they were not responsive, and yet, we still must pay, and so, here we are.
And the reason that I was asking, and I think we need to have healthy relationships with our contractors, but it says in our contracts, if we don't receive it 90 days after the fiscal year is over, that that's what will be paid for services provided. I think we need healthy relationships, but at the same time, we also need our fiscal processes to not be so sectioned off where we're taking care of 2021, and I get it that that's not, that was out of your hands and that was in theirs. What is confusing is we did create a new contract in February, it's too bad they didn't respond about the previous contract back then, should have snuck it in.
Well, they were confused on that, and then they just stopped communicating with us.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate all the responses.
All right, so, I'll open it up for the public. Don't see any hands up or anyone in the chambers, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Where are we?
7.6.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve purchase order for Adventist St. Helena and Vallejo Hospital for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services in the amount of $69,103 for Fiscal Year 202021, and authorize Lake County Behavioral Health Services Department head to sign the purchase order.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Director Metcalf and staff, and Elise and Christine for your help on that and giving us the information we need to hear. All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. With that, we will, it looks like we're coming to 10 minutes, 12:30, but let's do calendars and then we'll go to lunch, hopefully at 12:30.
5.8.
Oh, well, I guess we will go to 5.
Whenever you feel like it.
We need to do 5.8. You're right. Sorry. We'll do calendars after. Approve late travel claims for a total amount of $211.89 for the Community Development Department. And this item was pulled by Supervisor Sabatier.
Yes. So not too long ago, we went over our, an issue with travel policy, not an issue, but we went over an issue related to travel policies. And I've been reading the travel policy. And there, I just wanted to bring this up. I think today I am going to approve this because I don't want to swipe the rug from under people's feet. But at the same time, there's an issue here. There is not, no possible way after 60 days that you do travel, it says in the travel policy that you shall forfeit the reimbursement if you didn't submit it within 60 days. And I think that, I, I want to make that statement so that all directors make sure to make that statement to all of their staff members of the importance of getting this within 60 days so that it doesn't have to come to us. It just goes through the normal processes to get reimbursed. There is no policy that says you can bring it to the board supervisors for approval that it's past those 60 days either. But I also know we've been doing it in the past. So I just wanted to make sure and alert that I know there's some work going on right now to review the travel policy. I don't know if we need like a one reminder and that's it, or two reminder, like, how, how do we, because I don't want to not reimburse our staff because they're doing something that we believe is beneficial to the county, for them to learn something or do something. But at the same time, we, again, we can't have things laying over for such a long amount of time. And the other issue is from the auditor controller side. When I was speaking with our auditor controller, if we stay within our policy, it's a non taxable thing. But if it's outside the policy, it gets flagged as a taxable thing, and we're approving these things. And there, there, there's, there's some repercussions with these approvals. And so that's why with that, all that I've learned, I wanted to at least mention it to the rest of the board, because I didn't know until I know. But I think that, and for me, this will be the last one that I approve and hope that we stay within the 60 days from now on, or else, again, we have a policy that we're not following.
See you over.
Thank you. I think that what I can do to assist the board is we'll send out a notice to all department heads via email with a reminder expressly with the statements that you just made. And we'll follow up with the board with hopefully a proposed revised reimbursement policy here within a short time.
Any other comments? Open it up for the public. Anyone in the public want to make a comment on 5.8? Seeing and hearing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve late travel claims for a total amount of $211.89 for the Community Development Department.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. All right. Think we can conduct calendars?
This is on, anyways, can you go back to 6.5 and make a motion? It wasn't working. Can you go, hello?
There was no motion.
Can you make a motion to, to a date and time certain?
Oh, because it's a public hearing.
Okay. So I will go ahead and open up item 6.5, Public Hearing, where the board of supervisors will consider an ordinance adopting the California Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. And
For 10:15 next week.
I didn't hear that. Ms. Grant, did you?
First, you have to move to reconsider the item and then.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that, hold on, was that for next week? That was in September.
No, that was reconsidered.
Oh, reconsider. Okay, sorry. Aye.
Okay. So opposed? Okay. So we will reopen 6.5 as just read. And
I think we were aiming for September 13th.
Correct.
All right. So let me open it up to the public briefly. Anyone from the public want to make a comment on this item? All right. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to continue the public hearing for the Muello Ordinance to September 13th at 10:15 a.m.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Are we good, Anita? All right. So calendars. We'll start with Supervisor Simon.
Okay. Tomorrow, I'll finish up today's meeting and then the APC and LTA meeting tomorrow. On Thursday, have the, looks like an accepted meeting from Tammy for the CSG Climate Action Collaboration Grant. I think there's going to be a discussion on that. Little Town Area Town Hall, which is Thursday night. Friday, looks like we're doing a tour with Lars or a meeting in the morning. So Susan, I think we'll reschedule that one on Friday. And then later that afternoon, there's a staff tree mortality meeting. And then Lake Mendocino and Napa Counties, that afternoon check-in, I'm probably not going to make that one. That's our, anyway, I got practice at that time. I'm going to miss that one. So anyway, that's kind of the calendar for that day. On Monday, have meetings with, starting with Russ Kramer, can have some lunch with our, my City of Clear Lake representative. And then we have the CMAT Committee and the Risk Reduction Authority meeting coming up. So, yeah, that's it.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah. After this meeting, I'm going to be spending some time working on that database that I shared with you guys, working with IT, trying to move things forward here. Then tomorrow, Lake APC and LTA, ending that day with KUSD Board Meeting and Judge's Breakfast on Thursday, looking at our upcoming website redesign as well with that team on Thursday. Then the Clean Water Program. And on Friday, I am finally doing the Ag Venture. I tried doing that four years ago and didn't quite work out. So looking to learn a little bit more. And then Monday, all I have right now is my meeting with the CAO and then board of supervisors meeting on Tuesday.
Mr. Chair Piska?
I have a couple of things to report out. Last week, I had a call with Senator McGuire talking about just trying to clarify the asks that we have in dealing with tree mortality and making sure that he understands exactly where we are. And so we made good progress there. We're going to be working on a deliverable for him, a wind sheet, so that he is crystal clear on everything that we need and he wants to help us. And so I think that's going to go a long way in furthering our projects. We've also had several meetings, came up in the Risk Reduction Authority, came up in conversation with this board about having a climate action plan. And there is a grant opportunity with the Strategic Growth Council. And I think we may have possibly found a grant, a grant writer to go after that. That's going to be a big project. That grant is due in October, so that's going to require a lot of collaboration. But I'm really excited. That's going to be a massive step forward for us again. So tomorrow, I have steamy glasses. Kind of a light day as I'm getting my kids all ready for school. Thursday, Climate Action Collaborative Grant Meeting, that's what that means. That's trying to pull that collaborative together. So you'll see that on my calendar every week, Fire Safe Council. And the Tree Mortality Roadmap Meeting I'm having with CAO Parker, that's working on that deliverable for Senator McGuire. Then Friday, I'm going to be on that tour with you and Lars. So that's going to be fun, looking at the aquatics rec center possibilities. Then our tree, weekly tree staffing meeting. Well, we're going to be including Conocti Fire Safe Council group in the beginning of that. So we're working toward, working on the, the, the grant to the evacuation grant. In the afternoon, the Lake Mendocino and Napa Counties, that's a meeting that I've organized with the other supervisors so that we can work on our regional approach. So I've, I've met with supervisors Dillon and Hescheck in the past. It's been a couple of months, so just connecting with them, we can trade stories and make sure that we're kind of moving together and we can support each other in every way possible and work on that regional approach. So that's what it's for. And I just wanted to extend an invitation to you if you're available, but it's, I get it. I get what time of year. So, yep. And then last weekend before school starts, so Monday, I have my meeting with CAO Parker in the morning, CMAT Reporting Committee, and Risk Reduction Authority, and then back on Tuesday.
All right. Looks like it's my turn.
All right. So tomorrow, gender review, and then I'll be meeting with a constituent in Nice. Another meeting that we'll have, the Upper Lake Havemonts Little Tribe, will be meeting with myself in special districts. Thursday, I have the same tour that you have Friday with, with, about the aquatics. And then the Brown Bag GSFA lunch meeting, I'll be coming to that to open up with a couple of words. Design Concept, I don't know if you got that.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's Thursday.
Right. Redesign.
Right. So that, Clean Water Management at 2. Friday, Ag Venture. So I'll be doing that as well. There is a conflicting ad hoc meeting, RCRC, and I know you won't be able to attend either because we're both doing Ag Venture, so I'll let them know. And then Monday, meeting with CAO Parker. And then I have a meeting with the folks from the, the CWD, I think it's California Water District or something of that nature, about the Upper Lake AR 6330 project and discussion that's going on for that. And then back here Tuesday. And so with that, I think we have covered all of our calendars. And I think, Johanna, you have something?
Okay. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, but I need to change the time on that item because I already told Public Works they could have a hearing that day. So if we could go back to.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I move to reconsider item, was it 6.5?
Yes.
6.5.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then
Could you make it at 10 instead of 10:15?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Open it up for the public briefly. And I don't see any hands up, so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
There is a hand up from Betsy Khan.
Didn't see it.
Not sure if it's related to this.
Sorry. Go, go ahead, Betsy, if you can unmute. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Betsy Khan. Yes, would you please explain about the meeting around the Upper Lake Water Project?
Yes, that's the AR 6330 meeting that we've been having with the Upper Lake Water, Water District. Then the, some of the areas that was previously owned by, behind Judy's Junction, that area, there's work that's being done. And I know there's a commenting period. And so myself and I think it is Mr. Benoit from
Lafco.
Lafco is going to meet with myself and the two representatives. And I just, I'm sorry, I only have AR 6330 meeting on my calendar. I can give you a better explanation through my email if you'd like.
I appreciate that. I'll contact you directly. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Close public comment?
Yes, I'll close public comment.
Mr. Chair, I move to continue the public hearing for the Muello, I think that's what it's called, I'm going by the head, Ordinance to September 13th at 10 a.m.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. All right. So we will break for lunch, but first I'll read closed session because when we come back, we'll go into closed session. So in closed session, we have 8.1, Public Employee Appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Interview of Public Health Officer, Appointment of Public Health Officer. 8.2, Conference with Real Party Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956. 8.8, Property Purchase of Property Located at 5245 Third Street, Kelseyville, California, APN 02508306, Kelseyville Senior Center Property. Negotiating parties, A, negotiators for the county, Susan Parker and Stephen Carter, and B, property owner, Kelseyville Senior Center Incorporated, under negotiation price and terms. 8.3, Public Employee Evaluation, the Community Development Director. With that, we'll break for lunch and come back into closed session following that. Well, I'm sorry. It's 12:36 now, so let's just do 12:40.
12:40?
I mean, I'm sorry, 1:40. Sorry. Yeah.
Four minute lunch.
Yeah, four minutes. That's, that's, it's a, I heard brown bag lunch. No, just kidding. No, I'm sorry, 1:40. 1:40. Thank you. And we'll see you.